All right, friends. We are gonna start the meeting. I'm sure Commissioner Cola will join us shortly. So I'm gonna call to order the Royal Oak City Commission meeting to order for April 10th. We're gonna begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Dubach, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
As we gather this evening to conduct the business of our city, let us as always strive to be the best possible versions of ourselves. May we express our differences respectfully and be ever mindful of the fact that we are all here on both sides of this table because we love our community. We've made our homes here, we've raised or are raising families here, we play in the parks and walk our sidewalks, and we love our neighborhoods and the quality of life we've built together. And we're all personally deeply committed to fostering a strong, healthy city for current and future generations of Royal Oakers. Let's be mindful of what truly matters, remember what bonds us, and recognize our shared values and how privileged we are to be discussing as a community the issues we will consider tonight. May we all be successful in these endeavors this evening. Amen.
All right. This brings us to the approval of the agenda. There was one item from closed session that I'll ask any motion-making commissioner to add to the agenda tonight. If they want to wish to make a motion. Commissioner Douglas?
A move that we add an item to discuss implementing the outcome of our discussion in closed session.
Okay. The motion by Commissioner Douglas. Mr. Leal, does that motion satisfy your city attorney? The motion dies without any support from even our city attorney.
Just write it down, I'll say it.
Okay.
I actually wrote something, and I'm looking for the document that I wrote on.
Not last time. I take one for the team here.
I'd like to make a motion.
Commissioner Macy would like to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve an interim term sheet agreement while we continue to negotiate. Wait, this is a agenda item?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. While we continue to negotiate with MPS for an amendment to the parking services agreement.
Motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Perusch. Okay. So that, by the way, that motion you made was approval of the existing agenda to discuss that item as...
With an addition of that item, with an addition of discussion of that item at the end.
Perfect. Thank you.
That sounds a lot better than Commissioner Douglas's motion. I like that one.
That's why I didn't do it first.
So not making a motion for things and stuff, just a little bit specifically. Okay.
Yeah, I'll solve it now.
So we have a motion for the agenda on the table. Is there any discussion on the agenda? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right. So this brings us to item five, which is a proclamation honoring the Reba and acknowledging April 2nd, 2023 Education and Sharing Day. And I think I saw, there's Rabbi. I was looking for you all before we started the meeting, and you were hiding behind the chairs back there. So I'm gonna come down and read a proclamation, and I hope you can accept it on behalf of And for those of you who don't know, this is Rabbi Wittenstein, and he is part of Royal, leading Royal Jewish center here in Royal Oak. And you may have seen him and his wife around town. They're always at events, they're always helping people out in the community, they're always providing amazing honey bread and other delicious treats everywhere you go. And so it really is a privilege to read this proclamation to you. My kids accuse me of talking really loud, but I have to remind them I'm not talking, so I'll use the microphone for this. This is a proclamation honoring the Reba and acknowledging April 2nd, 2023 Education and Sharing Day. Whereas the basis of the continuity of any society is education, and in the great city of Royal Oak, the education of our youth is a priority. And whereas a global spiritual lead and advocate for the advancement of education, Rabbi Menesham Mendel Schneerson stressed a moral and ethical education, that a moral and ethical education empowers every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. And whereas in 1978, the United States Congress and President Jimmy Carter designated the annual National Education and Sharing Day, the observed on the Reba's date of birth on the 11th day, I'm sorry, the 11th day of the Nisan on the Jewish calendar in recognition of his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and the acts of charity around the world. And whereas the National Education and Sharing Day is meant, in the words of Reba, is to put greater emphasis on the promotion of fundamental human rights and the obligation of justice and morality, which are the basis of any human society, if it is to be truly human and not turn into a jungle. And whereas the Reba understood the importance of nurturing the heart along with the mind, and throughout his long and rich life, he believed education of our young people could only be successful if character and intellect were taught in equal measure when lessons of honesty, tolerance, citizenship accompanied lessons of language, math, and science. And whereas the Reba was an advocate for children and spoke about the need of each child to be given an education that would offer them the opportunities to succeed and put his words into the action, establishing a network of several thousand Jewish schools and educational centers in the United States and across the globe. And whereas April 2nd will be the 11th day of the Nisan and on Jewish calendar in 2023, and marks the 121st anniversary of the Reba's birth and year, which was capped with thousands of new institutions and initiatives launched worldwide in tribute to the celebration of his life. And whereas in 2022, President Biden stated, "The Reba's work reminds us," in the words of the prophet Amos, "to hate evil, love good, and establish justice in the gate." We each share a responsibility to live up to those words in and out of the classroom, and to plant the seeds of love, kindness, and empathy in the hearts and minds of every child in America. Now therefore, be it resolved, I, Mayor Fournier, and the members of the Royal Oak City Commission, on behalf of the entire Royal Oak community, hereby honor the accomplishments of the Reba on the anniversary of his 121st birthday, April 2nd, 2023. Further, we call on the citizens of Royal Oak to acknowledge April 2nd, 2023 was Education and Sharing Day, and commemorate this important date by making each and every day a day of education and sharing by following the great example of the Reba. To focus on the education of the hearts and minds of our young people to build a better Royal Oak that contributes to the betterment of society. Rabbi, it's my honor to present you this proclamation. And will you please say a few words, sir?
Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. Good evening. So really, Royal Oak is a great city that always invests in education, and I know all of you put hard work for this and to give a high-quality education. And this day is actually not just in Royal Oak, it's all across the United States and all over the globe, actually, since the '70s. And the Reba was basically probably the most famous Jewish Rabbi in our days. He passed away in 94, and he established the Chabad movement, which is today all over the world, included here in Royal Oak. And it wasn't just for the Jewish community, and he tried to encourage everyone, every person, every parents, every government, to invest in education. Himself, he grew up in Russia, and in times when things were really bad, and he faced as a child how really smart people and very knowledgeable people could do really bad things. And later, when he, in his twenties, moved to Europe, he faced it even in a worse way, and he had to escape from state to state until he, from the Nazis, until he had to commute to the United States. So he really saw how educate, you could be very smart, very successful, he saw lawyers and doctors and really best people, you could think they are the best people in the road doing their worst things. And it's all because they didn't have the right values. So it's something that we always have to remember as, like, for parents, schools, cities, governments, to remember to invest in, on top of academics also, to make sure our children receiving the right education and the right values. And actually, it's happened to be that you are here today, and I know you, they are like, I think, great example of this thing. They're not just going to school, they took like a project, and you came today for the biz, right? Right, so.[644.66][644.66](Laughter) Who doesn't know about it, right? So actually, I know one of my friends is here, so. But this is a good example of what education should be. It's not just like they start in school, they took a project, and they want to do something good here, they try to make the world a really good place, and people like them, that's what, that's our future. And every parent, every parent and every principal has to ask himself, how I'm giving this to every child, not even if it doesn't come from the most, the best house, or maybe had some issues in his house, but you have to give him the opportunity, and that's what really will make the difference. So it's an honor to, it's not for myself, it's an honor of the Reba, but it's really the idea that everyone should be part of it, and every person should take just a few minutes a day to think what, how I invest in my children's education. We think so much about how I'm making money, and how I'm improving so many things, and really, that's like what it's all about. Like, if we're raising good people, that's how we're gonna survive. So thank you so much for doing this and being part of it.[712.01][712.01](Applause) They're really good examples, and so I happen to be here today. So I'll take it.
This is a reading, I wanted you to have the...
Nice copy, so I didn't... Thank you.
All right. This brings us to item number six, which is public comment. So a few comments about public comment. The City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is a time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the City Commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be two public hearings at tonight's meeting. If you're here to comment on the public hearing for the Brownfield redevelopment plan for the project at 2:30 East Harrison, or the public hearing of the assessment for the special assessment for paving of Fair Grove, you may wait until that time at which the public hearing you'll be able to address is open, and you can comment at that time. So if you're there to talk about those two specific items, you don't have to come to public comment right now, you can wait till when we get to those topics. We'll open up public comment again for those two public hearings. If you wish to speak tonight, either at the public comment or regarding the public hearings, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, we will ask you to state your name and address. Please be mindful that the city wishes to hear from anyone who wants to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic, with the exception of the public hearing where you may raise and speak at those once open. So if you want to talk about something here unrelated to those hearings, and then also talk specific to those public hearings, you're absolutely welcome and encouraged to do that. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your allotted time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, don't hesitate to reach out to us via email or other means with your comments. Often, it's helpful to get feedback from people, you know, days in advance or over the weekend, so we can read and ask questions, et cetera. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we address those questions when the agenda topic is up. Or if the issue you're bringing up isn't on the agenda, we refer to the city manager who follows up on those items. And we have our amazing, fantastic community engagement leader, Judy Davids, in the back corner there. If there is something you want to bring to the attention, want to leave your name in email and contact information with her, then please do so, so we can find you and follow up accordingly. And our city manager is also taking copious notes here and follows up on matters as needed. So with all of that fun stuff, I'm gonna start public comment with a very important group that's here tonight, the Bee Tweens. And they're sitting up here in the front, they do a lot of great work for the community, they're an inspiration to many of us here, and if you guys would like to come up and kick us off tonight, that would be amazing. Ms. Macy, the floor is yours.
We are here tonight to thank the Royal Oak City Commission for considering for a second year of Nomo May, and to graduate management fellow Jeremy Peckins for putting it on the agenda. We think last year's Nomo May was a major success, and we are glad to see the city remaining committed to encouraging our residents to take pollinator-friendly action.
As you know, Nomo May is a nationwide effort to encourage people to let their grass grow so that native plants and flowers are available for pollinators. Bees are an invaluable part of our ecosystem, and their numbers have been declining in recent years. Nomo May is a small way to help these pollinators do their job.
Last year's event was a big success. The city sold over 250 signs for people to place in their yards showing they participate in Nomo May. We heard feedback from many people at city events who participated and saw benefits, including increased pollinator activity and healthier lawns later in the season.
What we are most proud of was that it got people talking about the program and starting to understand the way that pollinators need to be protected. There are many different ways for a yard to look, and different people choosing to add native plants or other pollinator features to the yard is a great way.
If you're interested in diversifying your garden, there are resources online, at the library, and on our Facebook page about native species of plants. These plants are familiar to pollinators and serve as great habitats for this essential species.
And just as a reminder, Nomo May is obviously totally optional. Nobody is required to participate. The city is just not enforcing its ordinance on the lawn height for one month. If you would like to purchase a Nomo May sign, they are available at City Hall and will be sold at the climate march. We hope everyone participates and thinks about taking steps to help our pollinators thrive. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. And thank you for all the work that you guys are doing.[1066.83][1066.83](Applause) Pollinators are so important, and I didn't even know how important they were until the Bee Tweens came and provided me more education on the importance of bees than I could have ever imagined having in my lifetime. And I feel better because of it. I feel better because of it. So Nomo May, a couple things, I'm breaking all the rules of public comment right now because I'm having this moment of motivation. You know, just as a reminder, I think we got a pretty compelling argument from some of our younger community members that are doing great work. So if you see your neighbor that has some, you know, flowers growing in their yard, the flowers are getting a little taller, the grass is getting a little taller, some of the clover leaves, dandelions, all these things that bees use, and they have a sign out there, or even if they don't have a sign, for the month of May, especially in that critical season, we want to make sure we're doing our part as a community to help our pollinators. So really appreciate the work that you guys are doing, making a big difference, so you should be very proud. Okay. All right, get those signs.[1132.83][1132.83](Laughter) All right. Who's next tonight? Who wishes to speak next? You know who I'm gonna call on next, and I know we have a lot of important issues. We have a new judge in our court, and I'm gonna call up Mr. Kolikowski to come up here and introduce himself. And before you do, sir, I just want to say publicly, congratulations again. We look forward to working with you, and, you know, we know you're gonna do an excellent job, but the floor is yours now at public comment.
Let me call back the following. First, but, yeah, my name's Andrew Kolikowski. I was just recently appointed to the 44th District Court by the governor. I've been a Royal Oak resident since 2006, I've been in practice since 2007. The last four years, I've been with the Michigan Department of State as an administrative law examiner. I feel prepared and ready for this next step. I'm very excited to serve the citizens of Royal Oak. I'm gonna keep things short and sweet here, but I've had a chance to meet some of you over the last few weeks. I'll be starting at the District Court on the 24th of April, so hopefully I get a chance to meet everyone else as I go forward here, so. Looking forward to it. Thank you for the time. I know you have a busy room here, so I'll keep it to that, but thank you.
Really appreciate it. Glad to have you aboard.
Thank you.
And he didn't tell you he's also a Spartan? Okay. All right, who's next? Mr. Harrison, we'll go with you in the front, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, 27, 29, Trafford. You know, recently, a friend asked me if I'm gonna participate in the academy sessions, so I looked at the itinerary, and the thing that struck me was the very first session, it says, "Royal Oak Government Duties and Powers." Powers. Who thinks this way? I was really upset to see that. Tells me a lot about you folks. Got a potpourri of subjects. Marijuana. I guess, how far has the state-level scandal reached down to Royal Oak? Were these approved facilities, were they selected purely on, excuse me, let me start over again, I'm 82 years old and I get tied up on these things. The approved facilities were selected on purely subjective terms, and the mayor and commissioners received political contributions from those who represented the selected applicants, unlike Berkeley, that had an objective criteria and a point system for selection. Parking meters. Why are the meter pay stations bagged in the City Hall and Sherman Drive parking lots? In the City Hall lots, it appears to be that old saw, "Good for me, but not for thee." And then, could it be that Amtrak insisted on bagging the pay stations on Sherman Drive, adjacent to the train station? You know, the water, the Washington, the Washington Street meters have been problematic for over a year. Let's move the bags on the City Hall, or remove the bags on the City Hall lot and Sherman Drive, and bag the meter pay stations on Washington. Let's give our retailers a break. As far as the master plan is concerned, the master plan development process is a classic procedure designed to make people think that they have an impact on the result. It's kind of reminiscent of the company golf outing where the door prize drawing was rigged so that the clients got the best projects, the best prizes. The request to involve the high schools is an attempt to skew the results of the survey. Regardless, you do not listen to public opinion, as is evidenced by the Rochester Road Diet, that a preponderance of the residents opposed. 97% objection rate from 1,000 households.
Mr. Harrison, we have a long agenda tonight. Sir, I have to ask you to respect the three-minute time limit, sir.
Last point. A little concerned about this Fourth Street conversion to apartments. I don't think you're gonna listen to the people on that either.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right, who's next? Mr. Vile?
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. My name's Paul Vile. I'm, live at 24008 Galpin for 32 years. Once again, tonight's agenda appears to be long and arduous. Thank you all for the time that you give to make Royal Oak a better place to live. I'm here this evening to speak about Sustainability and Climate Action Plan metrics. I wish to remind each of you that when the Sustainability and Climate Action Plan was adopted last May, the Commission requested city manager break to develop, track, and communicate metrics so that the Commission could monitor progress of the plan's implementation, and he agreed. In an effort to fulfill this request, Assistant City Manager Barkman is scheduled to present Royal Oak's planned internet dashboard to the Environmental Advisory Board at their April 26 meeting. Not sure you're aware of it, just wanted to make sure you're aware. In preparation for this presentation and the discussion that is scheduled to follow, the EAB Sustainability and Climate Action Plan Task Force has been meeting and emailing about metrics. The task force wants to make sure that key SCAP metrics adequately address the city's greenhouse gas emission reduction goals, that they are clearly defined and have reliable existing data sources. As a key metric I am advocating for is a per capita residential greenhouse gas emissions quantity resulting from natural gas and electricity consumption. It is 1/3 of the community's total 2018 greenhouse gas emissions. If our residents don't know they are part of the problem, how can we expect them to be part of the solution? I'm hopeful that the following, that following the EAB meeting, Assistant City Manager Barkman's draft, "Royal Oak Dashboard incorporates recommendations provided by the SCAP task force," and that final versions of this dashboard are approved by the EAB and the City Commission. Having EAB and City Commission approve, approval of a key SCAP metrics is a necessary step towards gaining needed broader community support. Please be prepared to engage in this process that moves forward. Again, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Vile. We'll go with Mr. Ashley next.
Good evening. Alan Ashley, I live at Royal Oak Manor. I want to talk about the MPS parking. I lived in downtown Royal Oak for the last six years. I have seen, in the summer and in the spring, the decline of people in downtown. It is amazing how many people do not come down to downtown. I know how much this commission has enjoyed or pushing to park in parking garages. Let me tell you, seniors will never park in parking garages. That's a fact. Also, young people coming down here will not park in parking garages, especially young women who come down, four or five women in a car like they used to park on the street. They will not park in the parking garages. So pushing this parking garage deal for a good deal is a bad idea. Second, the more and more you delay in getting rid of those parking meters on Washington and on Center, those streets are dying. There are less people shopping, there are people still parking headfirst into those parks instead of backing in. And I notice on the accidents, the amount of time that those meters have been in and those accidents is as much as six years of parking in headfirst. That does not mean it's safer, as you all thought it would be. It is more hazardous, and people have trouble backing in. So the more you delay, the more those businesses die, and the more you're gonna lose more businesses. Also, this 15 minutes is a must, especially around Royal Oak Manor and other businesses, because as I said before, you can't park on Williams Street, run into our building, drop off some food to your grandmother or mother who is sick, and get back to your car in five minutes. You must be Superman or The Flash if you can make it from them up to the floor and back down in five minutes. It's impossible. So 15-minute grace period is a must if you're gonna keep those meters, but I suggest you get rid of them. It was a bad choice that means somebody did not do their homework, and look at other cities that are getting rid of it. Thank you.
Who's next? Send him back.
Tim O'Donnell, 1212 East 14. I walked into City Hall the other day for my scheduled meeting with the Property Tax Board of Appeal. I was greeted by Jim Guirem- I was greeted by Jim Guirman. I let him know I was requesting he not be in my tax port of appeal meeting. He let me know he intended to sit on that meeting, no matter my request. He then let me know he knows all of the laws, all of the rules, and he's been doing this a long time. His behavior requires me to ask two questions to this commission. Number one, the city pushed for a law to allow Jim Guirman to not be present during tax port of appeals meetings. My request was well within the law. Jim was fully able to honor my request. What was Jim's impartial legal reason for turning down my request? Second question, the Tax Board of Appeals is required to operate and formulate decisions independent of Jim Guirman. Its entire purpose for existing is because the state acknowledges mistakes in property tax assessments happen. Residents who have invested in this community are coming to the tax appeal with the sole purpose of pointing out assessment mistakes. If they are greeted with statements by Jim Guirman that he knows all the rules, he knows all the laws, and he's been doing this a long time, do you think he is making that statement in an effort to encourage residents to point out assessing mistakes? Or is it more likely he made that statement in an effort to intimidate residents and cause them to lose hope in ever correcting their taxation to a level deemed accurate and legal by the state constitution? Between 2007 and 2019, this city taxed the people owning its lowest-cost homes at a rate 1.66 times higher than the highest-cost homes. There are many reasons this happened, all of which are being dissected by many, many professionals inside and outside the state, who might not have all of the rules and all of the laws memorized, but are good enough at it that they have earned PhDs in their fields, and now advise state and federal legislature on what is and isn't legal. I've asked some of you before, and I'm going to ask again, please direct Jim Guirman to stop acting in unwelcoming ways towards residents.
Who's next? Let's go here in the front, sir. Yes, in the middle.
Hello, thank you for all the time that you spend putting into this community. My name is Zane Dufour. I live at 415 Oak Run Court in Royal Oak. I have a couple of different things I want to bring up. The first one is not on the agenda, but it's a personal kind of like gripe of mine. It'd be really nice if there was bike parking clearly visible in the parking lot down there. I rode my bike here today, and I was kind of surprised that like I ended up having to lock my bike along with another one down at the bottom of the stairs over there. It wouldn't cost that much, and I think it would like be a really nice positive impact in a way for the city to kind of lead the way in providing for alternative forms of mobility. The next thing I want to bring up is just that, no mome, sounds really cool. I didn't know about it, but you should vote yes on that proposal. The third is about what is probably going to be a contentious issue today, which is topic 10 on the agenda, the rezoning of 718 West Fourth Street. I would urge the commission to vote in favor of the planned rezoning. It's like on almost every metric that someone could reasonably bring up, the plan seems to meet the needs of housing's greatest critics, except for people who are just opposed to people, people who are misanthropes, who, you know, don't like other people being near them, and that's sort of fine because, like on some sense, I understand, because people make noise, and they have birthday parties, and they have kids who ride their bikes on the sidewalks, and, you know, if you're opposed to like more of that around you, then, you know, you can go live somewhere where like there's less of that. You can sell your property and move somewhere else. If you're opposed to people being near you, then I guess you can oppose 10, but I'm in favor of people. I think Royal Oak is great, and I think it'd be great with more neighbors. Yeah, so that's my kind of pitch for voting yes on topic 10. Thank you very much.
All right, and we'll go up this way, but next.
Janice Wegman. I'm here to ask a question about the road millage. When I read what the cover letter states and what's in the charter proposal, according to my calculations, they're wrong. And you can correct me if I'm incorrect, but it says that the current millage is 2.3026 mils for year 2023 to '24, and that you're only going to ask for a headly increase of .1974 mils, but I'm pretty sure that as of July 1st, that's going to decrease by 7.9%. And so when the people go to vote in November, that's going to be incorrect on the ballot. You're going to need to adjust that. Let me know if I'm wrong. Also, the last item, or not the last item, speaking of the headly override, the Hudson Park item that's on the agenda tonight for the 72% budgeted shortfall. The headly override in the recent library millage should generate more than $3 million not listed in their capital improvements. If you want to use the meager $500,000 that came in the Parks and Rec millage, I would recommend dedicating the ARPA funds to parks where they can use that $300 and some odd thousand dollars for other purposes, including Hudson Park, so that their budget isn't hit so drastically. That's all.
Thanks, Wegman. All right, and the plaque in the back.
I'd like to go after Andrea. My comments will be more relevant after Andrea.
I just called on you. It's okay. I called on her. Okay, I guess. I didn't see your hand out. You're asking her to go first. Is that okay? Ma'am, is that okay with you? Okay, all right.
Hi, my name is Andrea Corolla. I live at 611 West Fourth, and I am here on behalf of my neighborhood to present first our zoning ordinance tax amendment protest petition. It's essentially...
Ma'am, do you want to hand it to the city clerk? She can send it down this way for us. Thank you.
It's in regards to the proposal for 718 West Fourth. The protest petition required that at least 20% of property owners within 100 feet sign it. We have over 90% that have signed it, all not supporting the approval of such an egregious proposal. And it then will require two-thirds vote from the City Commission before it goes forward. I also want to speak a little bit about why I oppose this plan. The overlay area and future plan is established to allow otherwise non-conforming buildings with other uses predating single-family residential zoning to exist, but going forward, any new use would be single-family residential. This is mitigating the fact that the overlay area where I live and where my neighbors live is already at maximum density with multiple duplexes and apartment buildings, without dedicated onsite parking, many homes without their own private driveways, and several churches with people coming to go to church. The erroneous narrative that anyone opposing this proposal is a misanthrope, a NIMBY, a racist, or against affordable housing is inaccurate, dismissive of the actual problems that the various neighbors have provided evidence of regarding this proposal, and attacked it to divert others away from the real issue here, which is that this project is flawed. The developer is not invested in seeing this through, and the project is not affordable housing, and its density simply does not belong at 718 West Fourth. Our neighborhood is the same as a nightclub at maximum capacity per fire code. Not letting additional patrons inside is not to exclude them from the party, but for the overall safety and enjoyment of those already inside. I purchased my home relying on single-family residential zoning. I love my wonderful neighborhood. As an area realtor, I've sold countless other homes within this neighborhood and others. They also relied on this single-family zoning. If such an egregious plan were to be approved, it's clearly an example of spot zoning, as noted by Chairman of the Planning Commission at the January 10 Planning Commission meeting. It would negatively impact myself and the other neighbors. I just don't understand. We're the people that vote you in. You're supposed to follow the master plan. You're supposed to follow the zoning guidelines. The ZBA should be involved. The EPA is involved now. I just hope you do some investigatory work and potentially hold a public hearing, and then ultimately vote no.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Trish Oliver. I am part of the neighborhood affected by the conditional rezoning of the nursing home at 718 West Fourth Street, and I've lived in this neighborhood for almost 40 years. We've realized and enjoyed the protections of the current master plan and zoning ordinance, which has protected our homes, while also allowing economic growth in the nearby downtown. I fully support the efforts of my neighbors, including Andrea Corolla, who just submitted the petition, who expected the planning and city commissions to follow their own laws and ordinances and only allow for responsible development in our neighborhood. We believe that high density with parking in front of our houses will diminish the value of our home investments. Instead, this property should be developed with more density, or excuse me, with less density and green space at ground level. I was very disappointed when I heard the Planning Commission's recommendation to insert high-density residential with insufficient parking at this location. I feel sorry for my neighbors who are directly adjacent and the impact on their home values if this project gets final approval. I've noticed other projects that have been approved that have negative impacts on other neighborhoods, and I feel sorry for those people, too. I wish the City Commission would follow the goals and objectives of the current master plan, which has proven to be so successful for our city. Thank you.
All right, we'll go up here, yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amy Shaner, and I'm here to talk about number 10, or I'm sorry, number 11, the Traffic Committee Resolutions. I live on Benjamin Avenue, and we have been fortunate to work with our police department and Holly Donahue on working through some traffic calming measures. In 2019, we had 1,600 vehicles down our street within 24 hours, and they were traveling at an average speed of 33 miles per hour. And it's only gotten worse since then with Waze, people coming down our street. There's been additional homes built at Dahlmer and Normandy, so we're hoping that you will approve this for us so we can have the speed homes. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Ted Strunk. I live at 727 Gulf, and I'd like to commend this body for the... Oh, I'm here concerning item 15. I'd like to commend this body for the proposed amendment that will be presented to North Main Building. One suggestion I have, instead of having a set amount, and I think it's 250,000 right now for the bond, that that be changed to a percentage of the gross budget of any project. I think if that change is made, it would facilitate this process for anyone thinking of doing a project in Royal Oak. If it's a small business, they can take that percentage and know what kind of bond they may have to set if they so choose. Anyway, that is my one suggestion. Thank you.
Charlene Pike, 325 South Maple Avenue, Royal Oak, Mayor Fournier and City Commissioners. I urge you to take a deep dive into the specifics of the 718 West Fourth Street conditional rezoning proposal. Re-watch the January 10 Planning Commission meeting video and read the residents' comments that were provided in your packets. There are still several inconsistencies and omissions on the site plan that were cited and many other areas of concern noted by residents. The petitioner still has not specified how the proposal would meet any of the nine criteria used by the Planning Commission. On March 23rd, you received a letter from our attorney that outlined a flawed process used by the city. There is no section of the zoning ordinance that speaks to conditional rezoning like there is for PUDs or special land use. On March 27th, I sent all of you and the city documentation of Eagle asbestos violations that need to be resolved before approval. Please ask the owner to provide a timeline and documentation for remediation. The zoning ordinance does not contain a section that addresses conditional rezoning. The city is relying on Section 405 of the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. There's nothing in the zoning ordinance or in Section 405 that gives the city authority to waive zoning violations without requiring the applicant to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals for variances. The safeguards built into the zoning ordinance for granting variances are being overlooked and bypassed to the detriment of adjacent property owners. In keeping with zoning ordinance 77132, we have presented a signed petition in opposition. We have 90% of the neighbors who have signed this in agreement. Objective 1.1 of our master plan, preserve, maintain, and enhance the character of existing neighborhoods. I believe the sizable addition of so many apartments and so many zoning variances is not in character with our existing neighborhood. Please do your due diligence. Of the many proposals presented at Planning Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and here, this plan is one of the most incomplete and flawed I have ever seen. I'm not against change. I, too, want this neglected site to be revitalized. However, this proposal is not the answer. Don't let it be a quick fix, or the change that's good enough, or better than nothing. Please consider the impact, how negatively and the challenges that this proposal would create. Thank you for your consideration and for serving Royal Oak residents.
First of all, thank you for your time. Steve Schwartz, I live at 803 West Fourth Street. I'm here to speak on number 10, the property at 718 West Fourth Street. And what I wanted to talk about is maybe a little bit different, but I want to talk about principles and accountability. So this property was bought 10 years ago for about $500,000. The investor knew the zoning requirements at the time of purchase, sat on it for 10 years, did nothing. The property has continued to go downhill. We've just recently gone through a period with record-low interest rates and a great real estate market. May not be today, but it has been. During that period, also no action was taken. The investors then tried to sell the property for four times what they bought it for and were unsuccessful. They now turn to the city and the residents and claim a hardship and ask for deviations to the current zoning. If we look at the neighborhood, if there's anything we need, we actually need more single-family homes and kid-friendly housing, which is what it's zoned for. What I worry about is the message and the precedent set. If the city allows a wealthy investor to come in and hold the city and its residents hostage, then there's no accountability for their inaction. When I look at what has been done, there has not been anywhere near enough work done to look at making something work within the zoning that is currently zoned as. And what I request is the city not approve the deviation. I thank you for your time.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Franklin Hull, H-U-L-L. I'm speaking to the 718 West Fourth Street proposal. I urge that upon your closer examination of the 718 West Fourth Street conditional rezoning proposal, including your review of the video of the January 10-23 Planning Commission meeting, which included, by the way, the petitioner's disorganized, uninspired presentation, upon all that, you will reject this proposal. I resided at 809 West Fourth Street for the past 24 years, have been very comfortable with the neighborhood integration of the... with the neighborhood integration of the 718 West Fourth property operated as a nursing home for 70-plus residents. It did not complicate traffic flow or neighborhood street parking, and now I welcome this property to be revitalized as an assisted-living residence or a convalescent home. For all the same reasons our neighborhood was comfortable with its use as a nursing Presently, my neighborhood is a nice mix of single homes, duplexes, triplexes, quads, and apartment buildings, plus some commercial enterprises. On 159 lots, we have 264 units, which includes a remarkable 60% rental units. Obviously, we have been comfortable with our current number of renters. However, this proposal to add 25 additional units with this attendant traffic and parking needs is ludicrous. Although we are all eager to remedy the 718 West Fourth property I saw, this proposal is not an attractive solution by any means. But rather, it's very likely to create exacerbated problems, especially the parking capacity for this neighborhood. And Royal Oak should feel no special obligation to facilitate the poor management habits of the current owner. I advise that the commission deny or send back this proposal to the Planning Commission to identify and evaluate all factors, and then report its findings to the City Commission to address relevant issues. Thank you for your attention and service to our city.
Good evening. Jean Sarnacki, I'm here to speak on item 10. I'm not going to speak about spot zoning. I'm not going to speak to the fact that the approval of this project is a reward to an owner who has neglected this building for a decade. This is blight approval. This is not blight removal. Nor will I go into the matter regarding the state and federal government and asbestos. There are cars and different people, agencies there almost every day now, it seems, or the ice rink that's there in the winter and the three or four inches of water that's down there today as I speak. And I am disappointed that you did not get the asbestos letter and legal opinion in your packets that would make it for public comment. But instead, I'm going to speak about our neighborhood, information that may be relevant to your decision-making. As I was just sharing with you, we have 159 lots in the nine square blocks we call the overlay district. In that, we have 264 units: single homes, duplexes, triplexes, quads, and apartment buildings. This averages out to 1.66 units per lot. We also have Sullivan Funeral Home, McDonald's, the Royal Oak Women's Club, whose board chair signed the petition. We're a fairly dense area. According to the U.S. Census, overall, Royal Oak is 35% rental stock. And with the numbers I just provided, our neighborhood is essentially at 60% already. Already, we're at 60%. I think adding 25 additional units is too much to ask. Did you also know that the parking east of the nursing home building are already permit-only parking for residents due to density and parking issues there? And parking is only allowed on one side of the street? We all chose to live here because we liked the mix of housing and neighbors. The multiple units on our block predate our decisions to buy our homes. The notion that we do not like renters or fear them is ludicrous, as most of us live next to, across from, or a lot away from a rental. However, it is the homeowners that are the glue here. We host the block parties. We extend invites to TGIF get-togethers on a neighbor's lawn. We remind them about leaf pickup, what snow emergencies mean, and what to do with arts, beats, and eats parking. Affordable housing was one of the reasons for this project, yet no one has asked what the anticipated rental costs will be. I would bet a few bucks that the rentals already in our neighborhood are cheaper. If salvaging this building is even now possible with all the asbestos issues and other issues, we would welcome the opportunity to talk with the architect and owner. To date, I have yet to hear from him, though promises were made at the Plan Commission to reach out, and the one neighbor that they did speak to broke two, was a no-show for two meetings before he finally showed. How many neighbors long to have a convalescent home or assisted living in their neighborhood? We know this is the past, but we think there are better options for our future. Please deny or send it back to Plan Commission. We can do better.
Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for your efforts.
My name is Gail Linden, and I do not live in Royal Oak. I live across Woodward in Huntington Woods, and I've lived there for more than 60 years, but have gone to Royal Oak schools and seen the changes in the city as time goes on. I'm coming to you tonight because I'm coming as a representative of the Planning Commission in the city of Huntington Woods, as a former member of the ZBA of Huntington Woods, and as a Realtor who finds what's going on on Fourth Street just really something that shouldn't be happening at all. As Andrea put it, this is spot zoning. There is no conditional zoning that's allowed in the ordinances for you to go over. It was an overlay, and that's all that it was. And if it doesn't continue in its use, it should revert back to its original use of residential. Looking to see what some of the recommendations were from the Planning Commission, it said there's a demand in the city for affordable and transitional housing for young people, single professionals, seniors seeking to age in place, and others. Gee, 25 units and only one of them is ADA compliant. Is the elevator right? Let's talk about the lack of parking. You know, that's one per unit, and yes, you know, it is going to affect the city, you know, and the streets and the residents around it. They're already using permitted parking for their driveways that don't work out for them, and it's going to have a tremendous overflow. Converting it to multiple families that you need more of? Gee, didn't the Griffin Billing Place and your number 12, I think it is, no, excuse me, 14 for North Main with, you know, the PUD unit going in there give you more, you know, density and more units? You don't need more units. This neighborhood needs to be preserved. The people who live there and who have bought there want to maintain their neighborhoods. It will affect the values of their property. I can't believe that you would ask the two residents to live behind the alley, which will serve as a driveway, and it should not be doing it for 25 spaces, of which 10 downstairs in the basement are underwater today. You know, what kind of fencing they want? One person doesn't want a fence, and the other person wants posts and bushes, and bushes, and then nothing. What would it be like along I-75 if you asked the neighbors on Stevenson, "What kind of fence do you want backing up?" And they all asked for something different. There's ordinances for a reason, and you need to follow them. You need to turn this down now. Thank you.
Good evening. Sue Fabian. Truth is a good thing. I assume you also believe in the truth. Here's some truths that I have viewed over the years. You violated your own constitution, the city charter, in wrongfully denying a past valid ballot, Veterans Ballot petition, for which you were sued into compliance. You refused to listen to the circuit court, and you appealed, and you lost. You reacted by changing the local ballot initiative ordinance to allow you to subjectively decline future valid petitions. When two candidates, Gibbs and Labassier, won election that truly represented the people, you immediately proceeded to change the number of commissioners required to put an issue on the commission agenda from two to three. You attempt to portray anyone who disagrees with you as right-wing radicals, as shown by this piece of campaign literature that you put out. When it seems that those of you that are acting radically by doing what you please, irrespective of the city charter and the master plan, and the will of the people, are the radicals. Your ballot proposals are riddled with deceptive and misleading language. In a recent library millage, you led the people to believe the library would fail to operate without it. It was only a bait and switch where this millage simply replaced what you would have otherwise simply distributed from the general fund. You continue to persist with road diets when your city-sponsored survey showed a 70% rejection and my larger survey showed a 97% rejection. You do not represent the people. From public records, about 93% of your campaign contributions come from organized labor, business owners and developers, the very ones for which you approve their bids. If you really wish to know what the residents think about your master plan, you'd put it to a vote, but you're not going to do that. You only want to push a predetermined agenda. You are not truthful. You are not transparent. You are locked up with the most vile institution on earth by implementing the World Economic Forum's 15-minute city in Royal Oak. You are traitors to the city and its charter. You are traitors to our country and its constitution to which you feign allegiance. If you choose to retaliate against me, as you are known to do, God already knows your thoughts and connections and works karmic boomerangs, as has already happened with the August 7th event. Nonetheless, I continue to pray for you all every night. Thank you.
Good evening. Nancy Poprowski from Batavia. I'm here in support and very concerned about my neighboring Royal Oakers. I don't live on Fourth Street, but that doesn't mean I should look the other way. I couldn't live with that, just like they shouldn't have to live with what might happen to their neighborhood. On January 10th, 2023, the Planning Commission voted 3 to 2 to continue with the Fourth Street development. This could forever disturb the quality of life for its residents, old and new. The 15 to 20 residents who commented that night are obviously dedicated, long-term loyal Royal Oakers, some who have been here 15 to 50 years. And I'm sure the new residents would be concerned about their quality of life also. The residents' concern is the already real lack of parking. What will happen when an apartment complex is developed? During the Planning Commission's own comments, it was stated that they truly believed that the new apartment residents would most likely have one car per unit. If that is true, and I highly doubt it, will all these new residents have no friends, relatives, loved ones, spouses, or children who might need visitor parking on a daily basis? Also, what about medical or snow emergencies? During the Planning Commission comments, a complaint was stated because they have to drive an extra two minutes to get to their neighborhood store because of a no-through-street blocking their way. That two-minute less of their time has protected the low-traffic flow and the safety of their neighborhood, a great trade-off for families and children who live there. So why would they vote for making it harder to park? This could end up with people circling the neighborhood for more than two minutes to find a parking spot. Then, if they find one, might have to walk several blocks home. Not respectful, especially for young handicapped people, seniors, children, or people that don't feel safe walking several blocks of uneven sidewalks in the dark or bad weather. Will they get ticketed if they give up and park where they can? It was also very disturbing to read online the minutes from the January 10th meeting. It never mentions the major opposition of this project. Why was that left out? I end with a commissioner's comment on this project, and I quote, "In this case, every single person who spoke was opposed to it, and every single person lives in the neighborhood." I think that does carry some weight because they live there, and we didn't hear anything on the other side, and that's a concern to me. The street system doesn't sound like it can accommodate extra parking. And they kept on saying to this, "The petitioner is not entitled. They've got the burden, and he hasn't made his case." So thank you for considering these worthy residents, and thank you for all your efforts in the city.
Anybody else wish to speak tonight in public comment? With Mr. Karloski.
Hello, Rick Karloski. First off, I'd like to talk about the ballot proposal for the road millage. Last time we had this, there was a scope of work along with it. All the streets that were supposed to be repaved and win were actually part of the whole proposal. I don't see one here. Why not? I'd also like to find out how much of that initial plan was actually completed. Are we 70% done? 50% done? We need more money? Why? And in this particular issue, I mean, we originally voted on this millage to take care of the residential side streets because the amount of money coming from the state as far as road improvement funds was much less than we needed, and there was no actual funds dedicated from the general fund to take care of residential streets. This proposal says, "Ah, we'll put it wherever we need it." That could include road diets, it could be called main streets, it could be almost anything. I think what we need to do, if you want to have a road millage for residential streets, say so. If you're not going to do that, state why you're not going to do that. And in any case, we need a scope of work. Just giving you money is not going to cut it anymore. With regards to the proposal on the Fourth Street, I did re-watch the entire Planning Committee meeting, and the developer was actually asking for ideas. He was fully reasonable to say maybe assisted living would be perfectly fine with the owner. So all of you here are always on your campaign literature saying that you're for seniors. We want to do something for seniors. Here's your chance, okay? The neighborhood doesn't want small, micro apartments in their neighborhood. They are willing to accept, from all the comments I saw at that meeting, an assisted living facility, or even a senior living facility, if not nursing home, but at least something along that line. Why are we bringing this forward with a micro apartment unit of extremely high density and virtually no parking? If this was such a big deal, why wasn't this put forward at the Buildings Place, at 855, at, I can't remember all the other ones that are on Main Street that just came in? Why are we sticking this in the neighborhood? Why? You had your chance to do this on Main Street. You had the chance to do this on Washington, which are fairly large thoroughfares, and you didn't. So why are we stuffing it in the neighborhood now? I'm really concerned if we do this spot conditional zoning, no place in the city is going to be safe. You can do anything you want. Single-family housing is done. Zoning is done. You get enough people on the Planning Commission to override it. That's wrong. You should have a plan, a master plan, and stick to it, and this doesn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I see a hand in the backcourt?
Good evening. My name is Dora Beltracitis, 320 South Pleasant. I'm here to talk about item number 10, 718 West Fourth Street. So for now, let's put aside that the proposal requires rezoning of the location, as well as require approval of nine deviations to the Royal Oak master plan and the building violations of the developer. Let's talk numbers. There's roughly one to two blocks length on Fourth Street between Hendry and Southwest, and along that stretch, there are 29 housing units, 19 of which are single-family homes. Five of the units are duplexes. There's one, I'll call it a multi-family rehabilitation unit on the corner of West. And there are five apartment units that today offer a total of 42 apartments in just that one to two-block area. 35 or 83% of those apartments offer no parking. So as mentioned many times before, when there's insufficient or no parking offered by developers, our neighborhood streets are the parking lots. Essentially, there's already a two- Essentially, there's already a two-to-one ratio of apartments to single-family housing along Fourth Street, with many additional duplexes, apartments, and rentals down the side streets of Southwest, South Laurel, South Pleasant, and South Maple. So what do the numbers tell us? The numbers tell us that adding 25 high-density units at 718 West Fourth would increase the number of apartments along Fourth Street to 67. That would increase the percentage of apartments by 60% and expand the apartment-to-single-family home ratio on Fourth Street from two-to-one to three-to-one. There would be 75% apartments and 25% other housing types. I have to inject, we're not downtown Detroit or downtown Chicago and don't require such density and don't want to, no desire to do that. Residents of the awesome neighborhood and surroundings of 718 West Fourth are content with the mix of existing apartments, duplexes, single-family housing rentals that have been integrated into our neighborhoods for decades, not just on Fourth Street, but again on the surrounding streets. We feel that our neighborhood already offers more than enough high and mixed-density housing options. This isn't a "not-in-my-backyard" pushback. This is an "I'm already here, it's already been in my backyard for decades" reality, and we don't need to add more high-density apartments to throw off the balance. Let's work together to find better options, willing to do that, and open to other ideas for this location. Thank you for your time and service.
Go over here with this challenge here. Can I see somebody in the ramp? Is your hand up?
Yeah, here he goes.
Fair enough.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, other members of our city government. My name's Mark Nave, and I live 309 South Maple Avenue, four houses up from South 18 West Fourth, whose petition I'd like to speak against this evening. I really appreciate my neighbors' comments tonight that touched on many details of this proposal. I want to zoom out and look at some general principles that I want to invite you to think about when you start deliberating about this petition that's going to be before you. First, to be really clear, this petition is asking for special treatment. They're asking for you to create a new right for them that, by their own admission, the planning commission will be immensely valuable, potentially worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. I braze that, not to say that that's something you shouldn't do, but to clarify, the neighbors are not here to ask their government to restrict the rights of a property owner. We're here to ask our government to exercise scrutiny before creating a new right for a wealthy investor. Second, conflicts about property rights are always zero-sum games. You're going to create a new right for one person, you're taking away another right, and the right that you're taking away is the right to live under the master plan with the existing overlay district. And to clarify the right that's involved there, that's a right to democratic governance. The master plan is a document, right, is a plan created through a deliberative, community-engaged process. It is the most democratically legitimate way we have to do zoning. Again, maybe it's okay to deviate from that. I think we should have really good reason. In particular, I would suggest to you, when you're considering this proposal, that you look for benefits that are overwhelming, that are obvious, and that are widely shared. I don't want to go over things my neighbors have said. I think reasonable people can disagree about a lot of things, including about this petition that's before you today. But I do think there's sufficient evidence that the benefits are not obvious, the benefits are not overwhelming, and the benefits are not going to be widely shared. I thank you for your service to our city. Thank you for the time tonight, and thank you for your deliberations later on.
Phyllis Selter in North Lafayette. I must say, you have tons of knowledge from these people, and I hope you listen to them. Anyway, I'm here to remind you that the majority of the residents are very concerned about your plan. It's difficult that you would even consider creating harm to those who purchased homes in their existing neighborhoods. More who weren't aware of this before are also very concerned. We already have been through all the obvious reasons, so I don't want to get into that. There's plenty of land or buildings to use for housing here. One of your nameless members stated that such housing doesn't have to be in the existing neighborhoods. Cross your fingers. I'm curious to know what you consider to be affordable. So many residents have always been harmed, have been harmed due to permitted structures and uses, and you refuse to admit it. A few of you could be affected by this too, when your values decrease. As for Fourth Street, are you saying that the market conditions will have negative impact if you do it something else? I'm glad to know that you care about historic merit as it disappears in the city. Are you saying parking won't be a problem based on other multifamily dwellings in the city? Do those have very limited parking or have to use parking lots when not in use? I don't think so. Expect to see similar parking situations as you continue to permit similar uses.
Rebecca Nordlama, 313 South Maple. I'm talking about Fourth Street. I'm just going to tell you a few things. They're talking about parking underground, the parking structure underground. They're saying they can put 10 cars down there, and they probably can get down there, but there's no way, if there's 10 cars down there, that they can turn around to come out. A lot of cars stopped using, they stopped using it because cars were bottoming out also there. So that's a concern right there. People won't want to park down there if they're worried that their car is going to bottom out. People aren't going to want to park down there if they have to try to back out of that because they won't be able to turn around. That's one thing to think about. These owners have not shown us a good side to them. They were asked to stop working over the summer. They did not. They kept violating that. There's asbestos in there, black mold in there. There's children in the neighborhood. There's my husband in the neighborhood with leukemia. There's other people with health issues, and they kept working on that. Now, they have an architect. I'm sure he's very knowledgeable. So being so knowledgeable, he knows that older buildings all have asbestos in it and has to be removed a certain way. They kept working on it. So they're not showing that they care about the neighborhood. We all live in Royal Oak. Royal Oak's a gem. It's such a gem. Don't grant that to them just because that building's been sitting there for so long. Grant it to somebody that's showing that they love Royal Oak. And as far as affordable rental goes, they can get up here and say they're going to rent it for anything. It doesn't mean they're going to follow through with it. Just keep that all in mind, please. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Go once, go on twice. Okay, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting to this side of the table. Oh, I couldn't see the hand, I'm sorry.
I'm Henry Dreisner from Fourth Street, 719, right across the street from this. And my grandfather built the house in 1939, so my family has seen a lot of changes. This facility has not been, as far as I'm concerned, I support, you know, 99% of my neighbors, by the way, this facility has not been properly managed for many, many I myself was even charged with harassment at one time because of complaints about the parking. Now, the parking, the city approved the parking for the facility that was there, and it's very similar to what they want to approve this time. They were going to park 15 cars in the back and 10 under the building, something like that. Fact is, there's never been 10 cars under the building, and the most I've ever seen is two cars, and that was long-term storage. And as a number of neighbors have pointed out, half the time, this place is flooded. So maybe they should stock it with fish, I don't know. And then, on the outside, they claim they're going to put 15 cars in the back. I've been there, you know, as I say, decades. I've never seen 15 cars in the back. I mean, you have to have garbage pickup, you have to have handicap parking, and now, of course, everybody's going to be electric, right? We need a charging station. We put it outside, or we put it down inside in the water. I mean, it's just unreal. I've seen this neighborhood, I've seen people, young people move in, they struggle, try to fix their property up. People live close to this place, and, I mean, when it was occupied, you couldn't park on the street. You literally couldn't park on the street. Now, we have other neighbors, we have the Royal Oak Women's Club, which is a historical structure. They cause no problems, really. They have a spaghetti dinner, and they have a bingo night, and they sell, have an antiques auction, and the neighbors participate, and they don't tie up the parking. The First Presbyterian Church lets the city use their lots for art, beats, and eats, and lets neighbors park there. And not this place. This place is pushing on all of our, we couldn't get the streets plowed, we couldn't get the streets swept, and, I mean, it's not going to get better if you do this. And as I've, over the years, I've seen the percentage of rental in Royal Oak go up, and I think it's distressing. I really do. And, I don't know, they've been working on this, and I don't know what they're doing in the asbestos business, it's no shock. I don't know, I don't know why this was even approved by the planning. I don't understand it. I don't understand the point of it, why you don't stick to the planning master plan. Thank you for your time, thank you for your service.
All right, who's next? Anybody else? Once, twice, double scan. All right, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting to this side of the table, where we will begin the rest of our meeting. We'll conclude with the rest of our meeting. So the next item on tonight's agenda is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Commissioner Macy.
K.
K. Anybody else? Commissioner Perush?
Item G.
G. Anybody else? Okay, we have a consent agenda with requests to pull G and K off. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda accordingly? Okay, Commissioner Douglas?
So moved.
So moved? Perfect. Second, second by Commissioner Macy. Discussion? All right, let's now call for the vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. So we'll just go in alphabetical order here. Commissioner Perush, item G.
Hang on one second. I have two concerns. I can't talk tonight because of my cold, so just bear with me.
It's a bit cold?
Yeah, it's not COVID. I've tested. Taco Fest last year was a real interesting event. It had some serious issues in terms of overcrowding, the way it was set up and the location. Now, this year, it's proposed to be moved to Centennial Commons in the same footprint as the Winterfest, and I guess I have some serious problems with that. I don't seem to see anywhere in the memo that the operator has changed the scope of the event and the density, I think, of the event. And I think that's a real concern for the location on Centennial Commons. So I'm just letting you all know that I don't approve of this tonight. I'm not going to vote for it because I really don't think this is an appropriate location for this dense and potentially very high-volume participation event.
Commissioner Duba?
Well, I disagree about concern about the location. I think we created Centennial Commons to be a community gathering space. I would like for the petitioner to talk about the changes that are being made to address the significant issues the festival faced last year. I don't believe he's present.
Jennifer Sear.
Okay. So yeah, you can be right here a little bit, what they're doing to remediate the problems that the inaugural Taco Fest had. With your permission there.
Yeah, maybe we'll start with the chief to give, maybe help answer some of those questions, and then we'll ask, if the petitioner's willing, you don't have to, come up and follow up. Chief Moore.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. The reason this is before you tonight is there aren't a lot of changes as to what was proposed last year. The reason is before you tonight is it does have
A new footprint, a new layout, but a lot of the things that were offered last year are again offered this year. And again, it's moving to east of Main Street instead of where it was the year before. So I know Jennifer Sutton is here this evening, representing John Witsen Associates. Maybe she could speak to maybe what would be different this year, or some of the thought processes behind moving the event footprint?
Sure. Ms. Sutton, if you will, thank you. Raise your right hand. No, I'm just kidding, you're fine.
Hi. So one of the things that we noticed last year, obviously, was it was our first year for the event, the attendance was greater than we were anticipating. We were able to move, we're going to move to a more pre-sale model of tickets this year, and we're going to be limiting capacity on the tickets we sell by day. So it will be, if you buy a Friday ticket, it's only valid on Friday. One of the issues that we ran into last year is we had some tough weather on our first day, so we ended up making those tickets valid throughout the weekend. We wouldn't offer that, or we would make sure that we were limiting the amount of tickets that were available on a daily basis. So that's our, we definitely want everybody that comes to have a really good experience at the event. We weren't sure that we were able to offer that fully last year because of the crowd capacity, so we think that this new layout will spread things out a little bit. We'll be able to add 15 additional food trucks, so we'll have additional food service locations for people to come, and then we'll have, like I said, additional entrances in this location as well. We also think it's going to work very well because we just hosted Winter Blast on the same footprint, and it showed that we can host a high-capacity event in this neighborhood.
Any other questions from the Sutton? We should call them.
So with what you know about attendance last year at Taco Fest and attendance at Winter Blast over the last two years, will this, are they about comparable to each other?
They're very comparable, yes. And we took a look at how many tickets were sold by day when we were putting together our pre-sale plan, like how many total tickets we had, and then we kind of, what we do is we take a look at how many people a food truck can serve in a certain amount of time and put our estimates on how many tickets we'll pre-sale by that, so.
Okay, and then are the food trucks spread out a little bit too around this?
They are, yeah. Yeah, they're all, so we have on the layout, I don't know if the layout was included with the permit that you got, but you can kind of see that we put them in parking lots and on the street so that there'll be just one line of trucks and then seating on the other side, so that when there are lines and things, it'll be easier to move through the event site. That's our goal, anyway.
And then can you just talk about too, how you plan on using, you know, I think there's three parking lots involved in the park itself, like what would be set up in those different areas?
Okay, so in each of the parking lots, we'd have a music stage, and then a seating tent with some food trucks to kind of draw people off the street where you're purchasing and into the parking lots for more seating. In the Centennial Commons area, we planned a kid zone, so we'd have a kid stage, which is an addition from last year, something we didn't have last year, and then some bounce houses as well, and then some free kids activities there, kids crafts, glitter tattoos, that kind of thing. So it would be more of a family-focused area. And then on the hill area, we were planning on encouraging people to bring, like, picnic blankets so that you could kind of have a picnic out in the park when you get your tacos at Taco Fest.
And then my final question, what would be about the capacity? Ballparking, what would be a daily capacity that you're all?
About 10,000, like ballpark, like over the course of a day, I would say.
Okay, so is there a rolling capacity, you're just, you're going to sell 10,000 tickets and?
No, we would sell, we would pre-sale less than that so that there would still be tickets available at the door. That's our, that's our plan.
All right, well, you plan to do about 10,000 people a day over the course of this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just a quick question, if there is inclement weather and you have to
Just a quick question. If there is inclement weather and you have to shut it down and say on one of the days, those people, I assume, just get refunds?
Um, refunds or, yes, we'll honor the ticket on a separate day. Depending on, you know, if the capacity has been reached for pre-sales on Sunday, for instance, and then right out on Saturday, I might honor the ticket on Monday or Tuesday instead when there'd be a lower capacity.
Gotcha. But once those capacities are hit, then your only option is refund then?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions? I mean, the feedback I got from the downtown business community is that they appreciated the event. July 4th, you know, we live in Michigan. We're all tied to autos. A lot of folks go up north, go out of town. And it's just been historically one of those interesting weekends that isn't as lively as it should be. And there's a lot of collateral overflow into our restaurants, into our retailers, doing some shopping that wouldn't otherwise happen. So at least the feedback I got from a majority, not, not everyone has the same opinion. I can't speak for everyone, was that it was good. The challenge, of course, was the, you know, where's my taco, you know? We had sort of a over-demand, which sometimes you think is a good problem to have, but not in this case. So it sounds like you've kind of looked at that, spread the trucks out, gonna manage the capacity accordingly. And I think the park, and while I totally respect Commissioner Perush 159%, I do think that we kind of have this Centennial Commons as a, as a place to gravitate, especially a kid's zone and getting families in there.
Family gathering spot.
You know, showing off Royal Oak and, and making sure that people wanna come back another weekend, so.
Exactly.
So I'll be supporting it after hearing those clarifications. Anybody else have anything else to say? Any questions, comments? Anyone wanna make a motion? Mr. Douglas?
Yeah. Where did I read? Was it in connection with this or something? That Michigan is like one of the top 10 cities for festivals or the top 10 states for festivals? I don't know.
It's because we have awesome weather.
Well, yeah. Summer festivals, I think we're talking about here. And, and, I mean, I'm, I like being a city that has festivals. I did see, I went to Taco Fest last year. I did see the problems they had with having enough vendors. And it's in the, it's, it's in the management company's best interest to manage the event in such a way that customers are satisfied. And so I'm, I'm going to count on their own self-interest to come up with a festival and a plan that will overcome the problems that you encountered last year. So I'm going to move approval of this special event permit.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, second by Commissioner Dubach. Discussion? Mr. Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, agreeing with Commissioner Douglas. Had this festival not changed from last year, I'd probably be inclined to vote no. I think last year was a year that we learned a lot. You know, it's the first year of doing it. There, there wasn't enough, there weren't enough betters. The space was kind of oddly set out, set up. Where that might have been good for rock and rides or carnival, it wasn't good for a Taco Festival. Winter Blast has been successful over the last two years. The space has been well-used. It's been easy to get around, never too long to stand in line to get food or watch a show. So I, I think with the changes made, the, you know, the additional food trucks, which we knew we need, the additional entrances, and then most importantly, the capacity limitations. So we're not just flooding downtown, flooding these taco trucks with people that they just simply can't serve. I think that's a substantial improvement. So I'm willing to try in this new iteration this year to make sure there's an improvement.
I know what you're talking about, Mr. Collo.
Let us just get on with it. It's getting a little cheesy.
Oh, man. Apparently they had beef with their dad jokes. Now we'll get moving.
All right. Let's go. Any other discussion, we'll keep on going.
Let us vote.
Oh, God.
I used it already.
All right. Anybody else? Anything to contribute? All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Yes. No. That's me. I'm opposed.
Okay. Clarity. All right. The motion passes. All right. That brings us to the second item that we pulled off the consent agenda. Commissioner Macy, the approval of the 2023 No Mow May program.
Thank you. So I wanted to also thank Mr. Peckins for bringing this forward again. I think that the B-teens summarized pretty well what this was about. But I just, you know, I think most people, as everybody said, have heard of this now. But there was also someone at public comment who didn't know anything about it. So if you could just tell me what the rules are. Do I have to have a sign? Do I have to go the whole month without mowing my lawn?
Thank you, Mr. Macy and the other commissioners. Based on what I know, there are no, like, you don't need a sign. The signs are, all the proceeds from this year's sales of the signs or donations are going to go towards buying native plants and planting them in our city parks or pollinator gardens. So we don't be putting that sign revenue back into pollinators. I don't, a sign is not required. I would say it's just another way to benefit the city. And I guess if you go 15 days and you, you can't stand your lawn anymore because it's so big, feel free to mow it. You could always just rack it up, your mower a little bit taller so you're not cutting it down so much. But I thought the B-teens put it very well and all the benefits that they have.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify because we didn't make it last month all the way through May because I don't think our lawnmower could have handled it if we had gone all the way to come in. So, but it could be benefit even to do it for part of a month and spread the word with the signs. And the city is gonna be putting out some communication as well?
Yeah. This month or this year, we're a lot more prepared. Last year, I think it came already like the first week of May. So the city was kind of like figuring out how to promote it. But this year, we'll be much more prepared.
Yeah, I appreciate you keeping an eye on the forest. Thank you. Oh, I'll move it over.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Collo. Any discussion? We'll be with Commissioner Douglas and Commissioner Collo.
What did you call?
Commissioner Collo.
It's only good.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Brake if he can please make sure that all of the city's code inspectors know about No Mow May and that people won't get violation notices for the length of their lawns?
Absolutely. I'm thinking of someone in particular, but, so, no, it's, it's, Mr. Peckins has relayed it's, it's good communications and also an understanding within the city departments. So June 1st is on a Thursday. So we need to allow individuals time to come in compliance following the month.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, that was my question because Mr. Brake and I talked about this today and I think originally it was suggested maybe June 5th. So residents would have potentially 4th, the Monday, would be when tickets would potentially start being issued, giving people a weekend to mow after the month had ended. So that'd be a good compromiser.
Mr. Peckins, are signs available yet? Are they printed?
Yeah, they should be. We have, I believe, about 200 here, maybe 175. That's from our rough, rough counting of boxes. Another thing that I saw when doing some research is it's common for residents that are participating No Mow May to just do the border of the lawn. So if the neighbor is not participating, then you can respect that buffer a little bit. But then also make it known, like, this is what I'm doing on purpose because I am keeping up on the sidewalk and the edging and stuff like that. So it just is another way to show your support if you are not inclined to buy a sign.
John, you mentioned that was very good. Anybody else? All right. Sounds like we got a buzz surrounding this one, so let's do it, Royal Oak. Call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Motion passes. No mow may is a thing again. All right. Thank you. All right. This brings us to item eight of tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing, Brownfield Redevelopment Plan, 2:30 East Harrison Avenue. Mr. Twain, how are you?
I'm very good, Mayor. How are you?
I saw you back there. I was like, oh.
Commissioner, sir, Mayor. You do have a public hearing scheduled on a Brownfield plan this evening. You may recall that this plan is in relation to 2:30 East Harrison, which is a project the City Commission approved back in September of 2022 for a 32-unit multifamily project. You may also recall that it had some sustainability items in it in terms of EV stations in the lower level, green roof, some solar panels. And it was one where you're required to also have two affordable units in the property. The property developer has petitioned for approval of a Brownfield plan. The Planning Commission, which also serves as the Brownfield Authority, heard that request at its March 14th meeting of this year. On a unanimous vote, they are recommending to the City Commission that you approve that plan for a 13-year period that would begin in 2025. The base year would be 2023, but the statute allows them to push it out while the project's being, being constructed and going forward. The reimbursement amount or that would be capped at some $737,000. And you can see that listed in the commission letter. If you're in support of the Brownfield Authority's recommendation, there is a suggested resolution included in your commission letter. And again, there is a public hearing scheduled prior to your vote.
Any questions for Mr. Twain? Mr. Hart?
Mr. Twain?
Mr. Twain?
I just want to clarify that with regards to the list of expenses, has the staff taken a look at that to determine whether or not that's an accurate amount or somewhat accurate amount?
Well, it's provided by the petitioner's consultant. The items seem, appear to be reasonable in terms of eligible things that we're reimbursing for. As part of the reimbursement agreement that's approved by the Brownfield Authority, they will have to submit actual invoices at the end of the project that would verify those expenditures.
Before we open up the public hearing, I'll ask the petitioner if they wanna come up at all and have any words. If not, that's okay. You don't have to. You guys good? Or you wanna say anything before we open up the public hearing? You're good? All right. All right. I'm gonna open up the public hearing now. The public hearing has the same public comment rules as we did for general public comment. Is there anybody here who wishes to speak specifically about 2:30 East Harrison? Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison on Harrison. All right.
I just wanted to say that the whole city of Royal Oak is designated as a Brownfield. And it was actually my wife, when she, Laura, when she was a commissioner, that brought this to the table and was able to pass it. And the background on it is a friend of mine was a commissioner in Troy. And we were talking and he said, "We just created a Brownfield Authority for the entire city of Troy." And I said to Laura, I said, "We ought to do that for Royal Oak as well." So I think that anything we can do to encourage development by allowing the Brownfield program, I think, is good. So I would support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Anybody else? Not seeing anybody else with their hand up, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to this side of the table. Commissioner Douglas?
Uh, yes. I'll move approval of the Brownfield agreement.
Motion by Commissioner Douglas, or second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion?
Excuse me, clarification. That's a plan, not an agreement.
Sorry, plan.
Good, gotcha.
I'm just gonna stop making, I'm just gonna stop making motions, you know?
Typically, you're impeccable. I should see on one of those nights.
Yeah.
It's a 5:30 start time.
I feel personally attacked here.
Any discussion? All right. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. That brings us to item nine, which is the public hearing of assessment for special assessment for paving of Fair Grove Avenue. I see our city engineer, Donahue, is here.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have the final step in creating the special assessment district for paving of Fair Grove. This is from Forest to 149 feet north. So tonight is the public hearing of assessment for anyone that wishes to speak on the special assessment role. After the public hearing is closed, there's no action that I need from the commission tonight unless for some reason you wanted to stop the project from moving forward. Otherwise, staff will move forward with getting the topo survey and designing the project. It's possible that we could finish design and get this on a construction project for this fall. That's somewhat unlikely. I think 2024 is more likely. But we will see what we can do if that will be an option for this fall. Once construction is completed, we'll come up with the final total cost for everybody in the district and then bring standard resolution five back to the commission for the final billing.
Questions for the city engineer? No questions. Okay. I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Same rules as public comment apply to the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak on the paving part of Fair Grove? I do not see anyone, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Mr. Donahue, if you connect again with Mr. Stier, say, "I'm disappointed that we didn't get to see him again. He's so positive and, you know, has made it to everyone and it's always good to hear his perspective." But, okay. All right. Any discussion? Any motions? Sergeant, make a motion, all right?
No motion. It's necessary.
No motion. It's just the hearing tonight, right? Ah, yeah, you're right. You are correct. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Donahue. This brings us to item 10, which is the Planning Commission recommendation, conditional rezoning of 718 West Fourth Street. First reading, Mr. Perush.
You do have a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding that property. The petitioner's proposal is to rezone it from one-family residential overlay district to multifamily residential with the intent of converting the existing building to 25 multifamily dwelling units. 15 of those would be one-bedroom units according to the floor plans, with 10 being studio units. The studios range in size from about 390 square feet to a little over 415, 416 square feet. The one-bedrooms are about 515 to 625. The Planning Commission did review the request and hold a public hearing at its January 10th meeting. Planning Commission did recommend approval on a three-to-two vote to the City Commission to approve the rezoning. You have access to both the staff report and the background materials in your packet, as well as a list of some of the deviations that are related to the building and the proposal. Many of the setback provisions and things like that are related to the existing building and would probably apply to almost any redevelopment that would go into this building. But I won't speculate in total. So while there are a lot of deviations, many of those are simply related to the existing building. You do have several options this evening. I did see, and Mr. Brake did provide me with a copy of a protest petition. Obviously, staff hasn't reviewed that at this point to verify compliance with the ordinance provision in regards to protest petitions. But what I had, I did speak to Mr. Leal this afternoon. Your options are still, if you wanted to move forward with a denial, you could do that. The protest petition would not impact that. You could move forward with an approval as listed, provided you have at least five affirmative votes in support to get to the two-thirds. If you believe after your discussions you would get to a four-to-three vote, we would both recommend that you postpone it till we have an opportunity to review the protest petition. With that, there is a resolution included if you support the Planning Commission's recommendation. Or I can attempt to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Mr. Twain? Mr. Douglas?
Mr. Twain, tell us a little bit about the, the nature of a conditional rezoning proposal, how it comes to the Planning Commission and, and what options they have.
Well, the conditional rezoning, conversely, from a conventional rezoning, we have done, for a little background, 32 of those, including the one in front of you this evening. The first one was done back in 2009. The first one was done back in 2009. I believe they, you have approved, or the city has approved 19 of those. One is pending, and 12 were either withdrawn or denied. So the process that the planning commission and the city has gone through in reviewing a conditional rezoning has been the same since 2009, and it basically follows the provision that is included in the state statute, which indicates a petitioner can submit a written request, and the city can review a request to use and develop a piece of property subject to the voluntary conditions they offer. The way we've processed those is every one of those requests for rezoning must come with a complete site plan that identifies not only the use, the single use they're proposing or mixed use, but also how it complies or does not comply with specific ordinance provisions if it were going to be located in their district. Those are some of the conditions that, under that provision, we've dealt with, is say these are the, he's offering writing involuntary offering not only the use, but the specific site plan. Those go through the same rezoning process, meaning there's a public hearing held at the planning commission. The notice is provided out 300 feet to all the property owners within that area or occupants. The planning commission has its normal review and approval recommendation steps. It can recommend approval, it can recommend denial, it can postpone it and bring it back for more information. Under a conditional rezoning, you really can't suggest additional conditions that aren't voluntarily offered unless they have to do with an existing ordinance provision, meaning the petitioner, under our review, has, if the planning commission and city commission decided that they've offered not to put in screening that normally would be required, you could tell them to put it in in order to move forward. That's not an additional condition is how we've treated these going forward. So anything that's not a specific ordinance requirement, unless it's offered voluntarily, you really can't demand that they provide it. That's how we've processed them since, like I said, 2009.
Okay, thanks. And another question, and I'm sure Mr. Leal will tell me if I'm on the line with directing it to you, but can you speak about the asbestos issue or the, who regulates that and how is that handled?
Well, it's city, as, I mean, I don't want to jump on Mr. Leal's legal items on it, but we're preempted by state and federal statute. We have no role in determining that there is asbestos in a building, that it, how it needs to be removed, or once it's removed, how it's in compliance. We do issue building permits, and a contractor is required to comply with state and federal laws under that. They're required to approach Eagle, and Eagle is the current entity. It used to be the DEQ, but they're the state entity that's involved with it. When they clear it, they'll let the petitioner know that they're no longer in violation and go forward. We really have no role in the asbestos removal or final say. It's very similar to, by comparison, a little bit, if the health department closes a restaurant or violates a restaurant because of kitchen or health issues, food issues, we have no role in that either.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Twain? Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you, Mr. Twain. If the site were to remain and reopen as an adult convalescent facility or some sort of facility related to that, do you know, do you have an idea about how many parking spaces it would probably require?
Well, it depends on the type of senior facility it is that it comes back in. The overlay district, we've, the way that was created, I don't know if everyone, anyone's familiar with that totally, but the overlay district, when the prior master plan and zoning ordinance was adopted back in 2001, there were a lot of properties that were zoned in another zoning district. Without looking, I couldn't tell you how this property was zoned. It might have been zoned multifamily, but I'd have to go back and look. At that time, the legal counsel that was going through it came up with the overlay district, and we identified every property that was within the overlay district as to what was on record as their approval, so that they would avoid non-conforming status issue where they couldn't renovate, they couldn't continue to operate. Each one of those was identified in all the overlay districts that were changed in 2001. They were all mailed a letter that said how the city had them on record, and they had a period of time to protest that designation. Once that designation period was passed, that's what we put on record. So if this facility wanted to reopen as an 89-unit convalescent center, we'd administratively approve it and then move on. If they wanted to do something less than that, as a senior operation, we'd administratively approve that as well, because that's less than what they were blessed for. Only at the point that they go away from a senior operation would we make them run through this process of getting a new use approved.
So if they're.
I don't know the parking, because that would depend on the number of units and the number of type of licensed facility. It could range from a half a parking space per something to one and a half parking spaces per room or beds, so it would vary.
So like 50 to 70 some parking spaces, probably depending if, let's just use the 89, that example, that used to exist there.
Right.
Okay. And then, so this was changed in the 2001 master plan, that 22 years ago.
Well, the master plan was adopted, I believe, in 99, the original, that it's been amended since then, but the zoning ordinance change in 2001 is where these overlay districts came in.
And then, my last question, too, is looking at another item with this, we've heard about stormwater on the site. This site is, this building's quite old. As I understand, the Earbs family grandparents lived in the house portion of it at one point, so that's been around for quite a while. Are they, if any approval, and there one is, they would be required to come up to stormwater mitigation?
This development would require to be brought up to every building code, the stormwater ordinance, before they get occupancy permit. They'll have to show that, how they comply. If the, if it's necessary that the building department needs a structural analysis to show that it's structurally sound, they'll have to submit that. There's nothing in this approval that grants them permission to not comply with stormwater building codes.
So the 50,000 some square feet are retired, some sort of retention center, retention basis?
I would, I, without, without knowing the stormwater ordinance, I'd want to talk to the city engineer, but yes, you couldn't have a basement that has water contained in it.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas? Thank you, Mayor.
So in the resolution passed by planning commission, one of the rationale states demolishing the existing building and redeveloping the property with single-family dwellings is not economically feasible due to current market conditions and required ordinance standards. Reducing the number of dwellings and enlarging their size could create more negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood than was proposed. Is that based, in fact, I'm wondering what the, what the considerations are that led to that conclusion?
All of those conditions were what? We interpreted from the planning commission's statements about approval, those aren't necessarily specific ordinance requirements. Those are the reasons that the motion to approve, they gave as their reasoning for it.
I was wondering if anyone could shed light on how the planning commission came to that conclusion, that it's not, single-family is not, in fact, economically viable if that's based on something tangible or?
I'm not going to try to get into the minds of the planning commissioners. Two are here, they can.
What the additional harm to the surrounding area would be by putting a single-family there. Any insight would be helpful.
Sure. Mr. Douglas can.
So the only buildings that are permitted on that site are single-family homes. And based on the space, planning department estimated they could put, I think, three, maybe, three, three single-family homes. And yet, the, the cost of demolishing the building and acquiring land to build three single-family homes would be, would not be, would be extremely financially disadvantageous to the developer. I mean, no, they didn't come to us with, you know, financial documents to demonstrate that, but just common sense tells you that that's the case.
Okay, thank you. Also wondering, you keep mentioning affordability, because these are going to be smaller, more dense units, but is that based in any, in fact, on the proposal from the developer?
No, I let them speak to what types of units. It's what they're renting them for. There's no requirement that they meet any specific affordability numbers.
All right. About it. I would like to hear from the petitioner, because I'm curious how, being two blocks from downtown, any kind of size apartment's going to be what one would consider affordable. So I'd be interested to hear the business behind that. And I think you already explained this, it doesn't go to the ZBA, because this is the process that we've instituted since 2009. Is that accurate?
No, there's no reason to go to ZBA. The way we've treated these is that you have the ability to approve the plan as presented. So it's, it's a written request planned from the developer to do a conditional rezoning for this use with this plan.
Right. Who's the process the city's used? I think you said more than 30 times.
Yeah, that's my rough count, was 32 times, counting this one since 2009.
All in compliance with state and city law.
Right.
I think this might be for the city attorney, so the asbestos remediation, is that a relevant consideration for the question before us?
Not under the standards under the state law and also the other requirements, like the site plan requirements that Mr. Twain had mentioned, as he stated, that is a state and federal law issue. We don't have, I hate to use the word, but we're preempted from actually regulating that. That's their purview. Our requirement would be that they would have to comply with those in order to go forward with a building permit to continue the, the construction. Otherwise, you know, they're dealing with the state directly, so we don't really have a role in that.
Thank you. That's all I can do. Thanks.
Any other questions? No questions for Mr. Twain? All right, I think I see the petitioner here tonight. I'll ask you guys if you're willing to come up and talk more about the project, maybe help answer some of the questions that were brought up during public comment.
Good evening. My name is Gassan Ebunu from JAVN Associates. We're the architect on the project, and we have one of the partners with me, Mr. Sherry, that he's one of the owners of the property, and he's working with the construction part of it. I just want to kind of, just to go through the kind of, the, Eagle is already involved in it with the state, and they're already going through the process to kind of check for any contamination or any asbestos in the building. And I think Mr. Sherry has more comments about it, if you want to say something about that.
So just to correct, I'm not a current owner of the building, but I am a partner in the project. Regarding the rent, we, when we set out to do this, we were, you know, whatever market rate of rent was, that was what we were considering. We recently were notified about the ARPA funds, some money being set aside to encourage affordable housing. We reached out to Joseph Murphy, I believe, who sent the email, and that is something that I discussed with my partners and is under consideration. We're going to pursue that with him. With regards to the asbestos, so the interior demolition in this building occurred in 2015. The owner pulled a permit in 2015, and they took down all the partition walls, did their interior demolition. So when we set out in the summer of last year, we began cleaning the building. We didn't do any demolition, but we were notified that regardless, you still needed demolition permit, and we set about getting the demolition permit. And so the Eagle was notified, was called in because of suspected asbestos, and I've been in contact, regular contact, with Mr. Jeff Benya from Eagle. So Eagle went in, I believe in February, tested 13, 14 different sites in the building and found positive asbestos in three locations. And I'll quote from his report, says, "There was approximately 120 linear feet of aerosol pipe insulation remaining in place in wall cavities, and it appeared that this material sustained incidental damage during the wall covering removal. There was no evidence to suggest that this material was being intentionally removed." So it's encapsulated in the walls. Also, vermiculite insulation was present in small amounts throughout the west section of the building. This material was likely used as attic insulation and was dislodged during ceiling removal." And again, this was all from 2015. That's when the demolition occurred. And then ACM floor tile was also present, but in small amounts. This material may be present in more significant amounts under newer layers of flooring. So after we received the report from Eagle, we hired our own, as required, we hired a certified testing company. They collected samples back, they started in late March into the first few days of April. Those samples were sent out for testing. We haven't received the results. Once we do receive the results, any asbestos, we would have to deal with it, either encapsulate it or have a certified asbestos removal company remove it. So we are in compliance with, you know, what, what Eagle's asked of us, and as somebody stated, you can't move forward with the construction, assuming this is approved. If we want to go in and get permits and begin construction, we can't do that until we take care of everything with Eagle, which we're in the process of doing.
Commissioner, you both?
Can you speak to any outreach or interactions you've had with the neighbors?
So I, we were asked to, to speak with the neighbors that are behind the building on Pleasant, Pleasant Street and Maple. So I reached out to them and asked them what type of screening that they wanted, and one of the neighbors, because of the location of the screening, elected to not have anything, and the other neighbor elected to have a mixture of shrubs, some sort of shrubs, and bollards, steel or concrete bollards to protect, they, they were concerned about any cars hitting their property, their garage or their residence. And so we included those in our landscaping plans. We amended the landscaping plans to reflect that.
That was part of the requirements from the planning department, to submit the drawings according to the requests of the three owners that are on the alley side. So, and beside this, we had to kind of meet the requirements for landscaping. And let's go back and say what, there's nothing we can do in this building unless we meet codes and requirements coming from the city of Royal Oak. So after the asbestos removal, we have to submit our drawings, we have to meet all the codes and requirements, and we do have to, usually the issues, some neighbors were talking about water in the basements and stuff, because really, since long time, and since, definitely since January, we didn't touch the building. So really, you can't do anything till you get the permit. So I'm sure, I mean, it's the group that they're doing this project, they want to make sure that this basement, there's no water coming in. So we will be involving water issues, civil engineer to kind of fix that issue. The slope might change the slope of it, so make sure the cars goes up. We are providing 29 cars, and we do have 25 units, so there's four extra parking involved into that. If something was tight inside and we had to kind of make, take two parking from the basement park and make it a little bit more accessible so people to turn around, we still have four cars to walk around, and we do have 19. If something was tight inside and we had to kind of make, take two parking from the basement park, and make it a little bit more accessible for people to turn around, we still have four cars to walk around. And we do have 19 cars on the main alley. And we went through the planning department, we met all the requirements from the handicap, we put the sidewalks, and we made the circulation the way it was requested by them. And for the building itself, actually, we're taking, it's a gut job. So all the mechanical, all the electrical, even the windows, everything is changing. So the only thing that left is really the structure and the brick. Brick is in good shape, the structure is no issues, we already worked with the structure engineer to look at it, there's no issues with the structure itself. So we are changing the mechanical system, so every unit will have its own mechanical system. The only time we put a unit on the roof is when we do it for the corridors. We are, there is an elevator in the building, we have to fix it, because people goes up to the second floor. We do have all the egresses for the stairs, and I mean, the building will be accessible by elderly if they want to lease in the building. I mean, we did talk about it last time, we had the option to have elderly from 55 and up, to kind of be leasing in the building. And the comments were back and forth, that's why we should also leave opportunity for the younger generation. So that's why these studios, we have 10 studios, 15 one-bedroom, they're actually between 320 to 600 feet, they're not big, they're very kind of tight units. But we're trying to make, take that 89-unit condensation, I mean, assisted living, and I do design a lot of assisted livings. For a building that you have 89 units, only the, only the employees take 20 cars. It is just without the parents coming to, or the kids coming to visit their families. So we're trying to kind of, the 25 units, it's a big-sized building, we're not touching the basement, I mean, we're keeping it just for storage and stuff like this, but we're only using the top two levels. Structurally, the building is in very good shape. We're going to be changing everything, the roof, we're refacing the building, we're facing the fascia, we're meeting all the requirements with the new windows, we're opening a little bit bigger sized windows to give it some character to the building. Like you said, you mean, Mr. Sherry was involved only maybe nine months ago. The original owner owned it for a long time. I was involved six months ago, so I wasn't part of the whole project for a long time. So when that group put together, they said we need to do something with this building, I was hired. And they did get site plan approval long, two years ago, or whatever, in 2015, to do assisted living. And usually also, assisted living sometimes goes to the state for approval, so usually doesn't even come to the city of Royal Oak. The only time you come to the city is when you go for site plan approval. So we are trying to work with the neighbors, we're trying to work with the, with the city, and we're trying to kind of provide a good product that, actually, you see it all over Royal Oak, Ferndale, Claussen, and we're trying to kind of do something good with this building. It's actually, it's a good structure building, nice building, three stories, and like you asked the question earlier, is it a good idea to demolish buildings, might cost you $800,000, $900,000 to demolish it, and to get three parks, three lots, there's no way, nobody's going to be able to do that. I mean, financially, even the owner can do it, or any owner who's going to buy this building won't be able to do it. It's a very well-built building, it's all concrete, so it's not like any wood frame, it's all concrete and block. We're going to try to kind of work on the inside, now it's clean on the inside, we're going to do a lot of metal studs, we're gonna, we have, it's already going to be fire-protected, sprinkled. So we have to try, it's not try, we have to meet all the requirements of what the city of Royal Oak will tell us to do. I mean, I won't even get a permit, I won't even can help my client to do anything unless I do get that permit. And we're here to kind of work with everybody. I know some of the neighbors are worried, but really, if you think about it, that's one of the smallest uses that you're going to have less parking in. Any other use for assisted living, any other use for 89 rooms condensation, is going to be way more parking. I'm doing two assisted livings in Harwell, who have over 34 employees, that they have to be there to meet the state requirement. So, so in this kind of project, you don't have that, you have maybe very studios space, you might have one person, and half of these guys, that they might lease that space. We provided area for bikes, and they can really bike to the downtown. And we're trying to work, I mean, we like to get your opinions too. We think that this is a good project, we're trying to make it work, and we don't want to keep the building like this. Everybody had issues with the original owner, and that's why we're here to do something about it. We did submit the drawings in January, and we came after three months, after we had to meet some specific requirements with the planning department, trying to make everybody happy in the process. I'm sure, I mean, there's nothing, there's no perfect situations, I mean, the neighbors, I mean, this building is there for a long time. This is almost a 100-year building, so whoever came to this subdivision, this building was there. So it's going to be very hard to make everybody happy, but we are trying, we are working very hard, and we want to make it kind of environmentally safe. I'm very sorry if some kind of stuff went outside when they're doing the construction in 2015, and when they're maybe, they're cleaning something this year. That was not the purpose, I mean, that was not the reason. We did get a permit for cleaning, not demolition, for cleaning. And I'm sure maybe some mistakes was done, but after the meetings in January, and everybody, I mean, was telling us that we have to kind of meet the requirements, and we have to kind of do the right things, and that's, he's here, he want to make sure that these things has to be done.
So it was mentioned earlier, only 180 accessible unit, I assume that because you're doing a complete remod, they all have to meet a base level of accessibility?
Oh, absolutely, and we do have an elevator from the main level, and we do have a ramp, so actually, all the units are accessible for handicap.
I would think, being a retirement home or nursing home, it was probably accessible to begin with, but I think as far as, you know, senior-friendly units, I think we're talking about accessible bathroom features?
Everything, everything will be accessible, and we have to meet the requirements, yes. Usually, in some kind of apartment buildings like this, you're supposed to have so many specific spaces, or so many specific units, that they're fully handicapped, and the rest, they're ready to be handicapped, so, so we have to meet the code, you mean. If you go like for senior living, you have to make it a little bit more handicappedly, I mean, the doors become, they're already three feet, but we make sure that they have the, to hold the holder in the bathroom, make sure people can maneuver, and for the showers, definitely. And every unit will have its own heating, heating units, connected, and just they have their own thermostat, so they work together. Beside the corridors, the corridors will be heated all in the same type.
Thanks. Commissioner Hunt?
Thank you for coming today and providing us with this information. You mentioned a few times that, about the requirements of assisted living. And I know initially, the project was on course to be an assisted living or some sort of senior housing. Why deviate from that with senior housing?
Actually, we're still in the senior housing, we can, the way we're designing it, we're designing it to be a senior housing.
Exclusively, or?
No, no, anybody, I mean, it's a lease, people lease it, but it's not an assisted living. Assistant living, you become like a company, and you have an operation there, and you have managers, and you have nurses, it's a totally different process. But for senior living, over 55, we don't have issue with that. But last time, the discussion was, senior living is fine, I mean, there were, somebody asked, what if you have younger generation want to be part of it? We said, we're comfortable with both ways. If you want us to be senior living, we can make it senior living, it's accessible, meets the requirements, or if you want like some younger generation that they want to lease some of the studios, it's available too. But we can go either way in that subject. I mean, if you tell us you want senior living over 55, that's what we will do it, we're meeting, we're meeting the requirements anyway.
I think it's your project, so can you provide us?
I wanted to mention something. Some years ago, the current owner, when he, when he purchased the building, and initially, he purchased it to open it as?
Senior living.
Assistant, well, assistant living. So I think we're mixing up terms here, between senior, when you say senior living, he's implying like a 55-plus building.
It's apartments, it's regular apartments.
So the owner, when, in 2015, when they did that demolition project, they intended to open it as an assisted living, but they were not approved.
Oh, they were.
No, he met some resistance, and that's why he sat on it and never, never redeveloped it, did anything.
I wasn't involved, so I'm not sure.
Can you, I'm sorry?
No, I'm just saying that what, the way it's designed right now, it can be senior living, can be apartment for younger generation, or it can be both.
Okay. And you touched on briefly, and I know that's not necessarily for us today, but you touched on briefly the affordability piece of it, and you were looking at possibly utilizing ARPA funds, or being able to utilize ARPA funds. Outside of that, what is the price point that you're looking at? And what happens when ARPA funds are no longer available, or if they don't become available to you?
Well, we haven't finalized, you know, price point, it would be market, we were thinking whatever market rent is at the time, whenever the project's completed, and we don't know enough about the conditions of the ARPA funds, what it entails. We reached out to, I mean, it's Mr. Murphy, and he, to get some preliminary information from him, he said, just wait until you move further along in the process, assuming you get approved, then we can talk.
And my last question, why 25 units? Is that due to economics, or just spacing within? I'm curious as to why, I don't know.
How did we arrive at 25, just based on the size of the building and?
The windows, we worked with the building shape-wise, we, I mean, it used to be 89 rooms.
89 beds.
And there's beds. So we went back, we got it all the bathrooms, so eventually, every unit will have its own bathroom, its own kitchen. And we worked with the windows, we worked according to how the building functioned, and that's how we came up to 25. And actually, the main reason also to 25, we wanted at least one car per unit. So, I mean, we could have made it 34, but we took it down. We have 29 parking, but we made it 25 units. So we kept extra four cars in case of somebody visiting, and that's how the look came out.
Right, thank you.
Commissioner Macy?
I'm going to follow up really quickly on Commissioner Hunt's question. So what would be the market price, I mean, you must have a number in mind, you can't be building this without knowing, of approximately 400 to 600 square foot apartment?
And usually with these units, the smaller the units, the more affordable, that's why first we got it, because we were designing some projects, like my firm, in, like for example, in Detroit. The Detroit area was getting up to a point, one time, they're getting $300 to $350 square feet, but nobody can afford that, that's why most of the units went back to 600 to 500, to 450, that to be able to have the younger generation be able to lease something like this. So in this project, we do have like the 15 studios, and I think, I'm just giving you my opinion from the experience, I mean, Royal Oak is between $2 to $25, $2.25 to $2.50 a square feet, so, to be able to do the project and be able to do the project.
And I just want to follow up again on the accessibility. So is every unit accessible without walking up any stairs?
Yeah, 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 I mean, there's elevators, ramps everywhere. I mean, we have to meet these requirements, even if it's not a handicap, I mean, you still have to, you have to meet these requirements.
I mean, I understand there are steps, but you can access every apartment without?
Absolutely, yes.
Taking, okay. And then all the doors are the three feet, like everything could be made?
Everything has to meet code. The doors were smaller in the older building, we took them, they're going to end up being three feet, to meet the handicap, the wheelchair, and everything.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carlo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so to continue, I guess, on this line of question here, at 250 square foot, an average of about 550 square feet, is you have 14 units at 515 to 600, that's, that's over, that's almost $1,400 a unit.
I said between $2, I mean, the averages.
The smaller units are 390.
You have three of those.
Whatever the numbers is, I mean, you just asked me, I'm an architect, I'm not a real estate, but I'm just giving you the numbers.
So I guess, I guess there's another question, you're an architect, you're a partner, are you, do you have ownership of the construction company?
I'm sorry?
Are you in the construction company that's in?
Yes.
Okay. Who actually owns it, and why aren't they here tonight?
So it's owned by, let me give you the official name.
Okay.
Royal Oak Acquisition and Holdings. I mean, I know the name of the individual, but it's held in a corporation, Royal Oak Acquisitions and Holdings LLC.
Sure. Who's the member of that?
The member is Dr. Merher Elder.
Great. Where's the good doctor tonight?
I can't speak to his whereabouts.
Okay.
He travels a lot for his practice.
Okay. I guess that just goes to, you know, my thought of how involved someone might be if they're not even, couldn't come talk to us tonight, and I have approval. So that's kind of interesting. I heard that, it sounds like you talked to two of the neighbors. Have you talked to any, did you have a community conversation? Did you host anyone at the library, at the, at various community centers?
No.
No? Is there any green infrastructure built into this, or do you have any solar panels on the roof? Do you have any?
No solar panels.
Okay. So no green infrastructure?
I mean, all the plumbing will be green, so it's part of the requirements. I mean, we do it at a lot of, like, the toilets, the sinks, the showers, the mechanical units, we meet a lot of green, but we don't have the electric.
I mean, so earlier today, we had someone who had a brown field, who has their painting solar panels on their roof, public art, charging stations, two units below market rate for transitional housing. We have someone coming up later on tonight, who's doing a completely LEED-certified building, and then I think 25% of the units are going to be market, or below market for transitional housing. So I guess I was just wondering if there's any, anything along those lines that you guys had in mind for the, the community?
Usually for LEED, I mean, they're not going to LEED be certified, but we, like I said, the lighting, the plumbing, the toilets, and the sinks, and the mechanical units will, the electric will have to meet some LEED requirements, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And like the stove and stuff like that. But there is no electric panel on the roof, I mean.
Good. Thanks.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen, we'll call you back up if we have additional questions.
Thank you.
All right, team, there's a question before us.
Well, given that I sit on the planning commission and made the motion to approve this project, I'll kick it off. One of our speakers tonight said that zoning has protected our homes, but the problem is that the zoning on this site has not protected their homes. And we will acknowledge from the start that this property has been allowed to deteriorate, the owner has not taken care of it, has behaved irresponsibly, and it's come to us to try and fix that. We don't get, we at the planning commission, the city commission, don't get to pick what projects come before us, people bring us proposals that we have to consider. And I'll also quote another speaker tonight, who said that the benefits of this project are not overwhelming, and that is true. This is, the owner is, has been absent, he's absent tonight, the property has not been kept up, and the proposal that they brought us is a modest one, I will say, perhaps not as enormously desirable as one might desire, but that's what they've offered us. So, speaking to the, what do I got here? The, sorry. The, some of the features that we see in this proposal are, so first, let me speak to the, there are nine points that the planning commission considers when approving a rezoning. And people tonight here have referred to the master plan, so let me quote from the conditions here. "The requested zone should be consistent with the goals, policies, and future land use map of the master plan, including any location-specific or corridor studies. If conditions have changed since the master plan was adopted, as determined by the planning commission or city commission, the consistency with recent development trends in the site's area shall be considered..." area shall be considered. Recent development trends are high demand for rental housing, as we've seen elsewhere in this city." So, we take that into consideration when we look at proposals that are brought before Some of the other considerations here, the adaptive reuse of an existing building is far, a far more sustainable practice than demolition of a building, dumping all those materials into a dump site, and rebuilding new. So, we are at least adaptively reusing a building, which looks consistent with the neighborhood. It's only two stories high, if you built houses there, you could have 30-foot houses overlook, you know, overlooking the backyards of the adjacent homes. The planning commission has consistently, over the years, seen decreasing demand for parking spaces, while our zoning ordinance calls for two parking spaces per residential unit. Developments are coming to us not needing that, and are seeing that they don't need that. And the example I'll give is the building at the corner of 11 Mile and, what's the apartment building there? Gainsborough.
Amber.
The Amber Development.
They're redbrand, yeah.
Has units of this size, and I drive by there all the time, the mayor drives by there all the time, and I've never seen their parking lot full. The people who live there come and go, their guests come and go, and there has not been an excessive demand for housing, or for parking, rather. As I said earlier, we are, we don't feel this developer has behaved responsibly, but there's enough incentive, financial incentive here, one hopes, that they will get the project done, because they wanna make money from it. We have our building department that's going to keep an eagle eye on them. They have to post performance bonds, so that they have an investment if they fail to complete the project. So, we can only do what we can do to make sure that they complete the project. But if we don't do anything, I see them letting this building sit empty for years. And our building department is gonna be out there, time after time, citing them, finding them, citing them, finding them, while the neighborhood watches blight happen before its very eyes. And for those reasons, I supported the project then, and I will, before I make a motion, I'll listen to the opinions of my fellow commissioners.
Commissioner Duba.
Sure. So, I really appreciate the insight of Commissioner Douglas, and how the majority of the planning commission came to this decision. You know, it reminds me of the DEMO site, which, you know, had a proposal there a few years ago, the abandoned gas station at Main and Catawba. And just a couple of the neighbors came out and raised concerns about parking and density, and so that developer went away, and now, four years later, remains a blighted abandoned gas station with no prostatins, that is undeniably harming neighboring property values, because it is an eyesore, like, our main street. So, that's, you know, a similar project, I mean, the loss on 11. There was a huge battle over the parking there. The developer insisted that the model of these small units would demand far less parking than ordinance requires, and yes, they turned out to be right, there's no issue there. So, that being said, you know, a lot of the arguments I've heard, and I don't find very compelling, that the parking issue, like, certainly, an 89-bed unit would require at least 10 nursing staff, according to State law. And that's not including cleaning staff, administrative staff, and reception, and then all the vendors, all the vendors coming and going. So, the parking issue, I don't find compelling, density, I rarely find compelling. Our city in 1970 was 86,000, over 86,000 people, and we're a bit under 60,000 today. So, density does not necessarily move me either. That being said, I'm still not seeing a compelling case for the necessity of the proposal and the variances. I'm not seeing a really compelling hardship, I only know that, all right, so demolition is expensive, but I don't know what else could go there. I'm not seeing a tremendous community benefit. I understand, Commissioner Douglas, you did describe a couple, they're just not super moving for me. And the developer's hardship is not clear to me. I understand this is a viable proposal for the developer, I just don't know what else could possibly be done. As far as like benefits, you know, affordability, from what I can tell, this is two blocks from downtown, these studios, unless there's some other guarantee, are gonna fetch, what, $1,400 a month? If they went at market rate? I'm not, I don't know that that's the kind of affordability we're talking about. And so, they were saying that, just because they're small. On 11 Mile, that was a different case, right? This is two blocks from downtown. So, without some kind of guarantee of affordability, I don't, I don't think that, I can consider that one of the benefits of this project. Environmental benefits, sure, there's definitely a sustainable value in repurposing that building and not tearing it down, but on the whole, I couldn't say with confidence that exceeds the environmental benefits of alternate uses with, you know, specifically designed environmental features. I just, I'm not weighing it against anything, other than, yes, there's definitely value in repurposing the building. All I have is to say, like, so, I'm not really moved by either side of this debate, so, I think my default position is to not grant all the variances, because I'm not being compelled to do so. But I would warn the neighborhood, like, if someone came over with a PUD and wanted to do four stories of highly energy-efficient buildings, you know, with a certain guarantee of affordable units, that would be a compelling case to me. So, I would, you know, I would want the neighborhood to consider, like, this proposal versus what comes next. That is very much compelling, and is very much aligned with our goals as a city. So, at this point, I'm not in favor of granting them.
Ms. Mayor. Commissioner Hunt.
Thank you. I think I have to concur with Commissioner Duba. When I first saw this project, I thought, great, you know, smaller units, meaning perhaps more affordable units, so that people who work in our downtown, our restaurants, our schools, perhaps, could live in the neighborhoods that they are servicing. But listening to what the potential price points would be, you know, didn't necessarily move me. I appreciate the fact that it would be a structure that remains, and I was concerned that if it's not, this isn't approved tonight, that it could sit empty, and the dangers that could come from that, in addition to the fact that there is asbestos sitting in there now. Would the petitioner be compelled to continue to work on the property and cure, abate that asbestos? But I really don't see much, other than that, much benefit to this potential project. So, like Commissioner Duba said, I don't know necessarily that I can support this.
Commissioner Cullow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I came into tonight thinking that this was good for the neighborhood, and against, you know, I know that there was a lot of people upset about parking, and, you know, I actually, I was around the neighborhood this week, and I was looking at it, and it really struck me that, you know, I think we've commonly heard 60% of the lots are multifamily ready, and it's true, like, the streets are filled with duplexes or triplexes, or there's, you know, larger apartments. So, when I think about, like, the master plan and preserving the neighborhood, this felt like, you know, this saving this building felt like neighborhood preservation, more so than any development we've seen, quite frankly. Having that building there is, I think, the definition of neighborhood preservation, right? Like, we're preserving this old building that's been here for 100 years, and it's what the neighborhood's kind of built around. So, you know, I, you know, so, look at those parking complaints, I understood them, I felt them, I've made them in the past, trying to, you know, rally against projects, I just, I didn't find them as compelling. It wasn't until, you know, also, look at that property this weekend, there are broken windows, there are doors jarred, it's not secured. So, you know, between, thinking about that, how the property continues to be in a state of disrepair, not secured, and then how tonight, I just, I didn't see a good reason, you know, this isn't affordable, this isn't sustainable, aside from keeping the building. I don't see enough benefits to the community to grant these variances. If this came back to us as a PUD, and there were some give and take, and things that we could add and take away, I think that that is the best option for this particular piece of property, because I do, I mean, as long as I've been here, it's been empty. And I think it's, I think it is a blight to the community, and I honestly think I would rather have someone living in there, so it is, you know, occupied. I think people being in there every day would improve the situation of the neighborhood, too. You'd have more neighbors walking around. You'd have, you know, the, you know, teenagers could no longer do teenager things inside the property, because someone would live there, right? But I, this particular development, which I don't think is quite phased out, we also heard the developer talk tonight about like 10 different options of what they could possibly do. Sure, we'll do senior housing, sure, it would be assistant, no, maybe not assistant. Like, it was back and forth over what we might see out of them without a defined business plan, and it was really, what struck home is, why 25 units? Well, because that's how many windows there are. Well, let's think about, like, we would maybe take that back, maybe it should be 20, like, without knowing a little bit more beyond how that was put together, and look at the plan. I'm, like I said, I came here tonight fully thinking I'd support it, and I don't see myself supporting this tonight.
Anybody else?
I'll just make one comment. If you look at the zoning variances that it requires, about half of them are conditions that are already existent on the property, that are setbacks that already exist on the property. So, when we at the planning commission see a project come in with a bunch of, I mean, we see a lot of, you know, zoning changes, really, this project is far less intense in terms of zoning changes than some of the others we see, just FYI.
Commissioner Cullow?
And I'm sorry, I just wanna add to, you know, I did look back in, I think it was 2012, like, there was 16 units that were proposed to go here, 16 year townhomes, which I think also would've been really good, but that's not at the planning commission at the time. And I know a lot of the same, you know, reading the minutes, a lot of the same stuff here tonight, were complaints back then, parking, density, et cetera, et cetera. Something will go here on this lot, it's, I doubt it will ever be three single-family homes. It will be some form of multifamily, because that's what it's been for 100-some years. So, I, you know, I call Commissioner Duba, so like, you know, let's, something will go here in the future, we're not sure what it is. And if it's the same developer, I hope you guys go back and maybe take a second swing at this, you know, talk to the community, come back to us with a different PUD. I mean, there's, this isn't the end, but I don't think it's, once again, for me tonight.
Anybody else? Mr. Macy.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, it's very interesting, listening to all the commissioners have to say here. I was hoping Commissioner Purush would enlighten us, too, but she's staying out of it wisely. I guess I'm wondering, listening to the commission, what we would be looking for that we think will come to us. So, going back to what Commissioner Douglas said at the beginning, we don't get to pick it. We aren't the developer, I mean, we would make some lovely developments if we had our brothers, but we don't. And so, we're stuck with what's brought to us. And has been mentioned, several things have been brought to us over the last decade, and the neighbors weren't in favor of those things either, and they didn't happen, and now, here we are again with another proposal, which has been well detailed, it's not ideal, in terms of how it's been managed, and how the neighborhood has been approached, and yet, it seems like we're gonna let it go, and I feel like it's gonna be the same as the DEMO corner, that we're just gonna have blight, and I know the neighbors don't want the blight either, but it seems like this is gonna be an impossible problem to solve. No one is going to bring something that will make the neighbors happy, and will make the commission happy, and will be worth developing for them financially, and so, we're up here trying to balance all of those things. And I agree, I see no great benefit here, and yet, there's a benefit in not having blight in our community, and there's a benefit in bringing people in. No, $1,400 is not highly affordable, but it is, in fact, cheaper than the going rate in most places in Royal Oak. And if you add 25 units to the housing stock in Royal Oak, the rental stock in Royal Oak, I mean, there's supply and demand, my daughter's in econ right now, I mean, there's, it does have an impact. So, I mean, I don't know, I'm afraid that what's gonna happen is that this will sit here for another five years, and then they'll bring back a really high-density project that'll be, you know, four stories and a million units, and then the neighbors will be really, really upset. But I, you know, so, I don't know, I'm, I feel like we're all on the same fence here, but it's too bad. I mean, I had hoped that we could come to some sort of consensus and maybe make this work, but it seems like, it seems like it's a no. Cheater.
All right, now...
We gotta cut the magic pop drop.
Yes, I did put a throat lobe in, so now I can talk. I came to this with the same back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, that a lot of you are articulating. Obviously, I agree with the economics of this is not gonna turn into three single-family homes, that's just not going to happen, given the cost of demolition, and the cost of purchasing land, and the cost of building the houses, that's not gonna happen. You know, people keep saying, well, it's single-family zone, and we have to protect single-family zoning. This has never been a single-family zoned property, it has never operated that way. It has been multifamily housing of some kind for almost 100 years. So, keeping it multifamily housing is consistent with its use, that it's been for the last almost 100 years. So, we're not really changing its use. The idea that, for example, that it doesn't conform to the ordinance, because we don't have the conditional zoning language in our ordinance, doesn't have to be. Again, going back to where I was a long time ago, when the state statute was amended to allow conditional zoning in that section, there was a big debate amongst those of us who practice real property law, as to whether or not this was appropriate, because it sounded an awful lot like contract zoning, which is a no-no in Michigan. But they decided that based upon the way the language of the statute was written, that it was appropriate, and that it was workable, and that it actually answered a type of issue that was coming up in a lot of communities like this situation, where a developer was coming to the community saying, "Just for me, just for this one project, will you rezone for me, not forever, but just for me? And if you do that, these are the conditions, these are the things I will offer." And that was acceptable to the legislature, and that was acceptable to everyone who was interested in that type of operation of zoning, and it was approved. And there was a debate back then, you know, do you have to have it in your local ordinance? Or do you not have to have it? And the consensus was, it doesn't have to be in the local ordinance, using the state statute as a template for doing this in your own community is an appropriate way to go, and that's how Royal Oak has done it since 2009, as Mr. Twing explained. We've had a lot of projects come before us that were conditional rezoning projects, some of which were approved and others were not, but that's how we've operated. There's been no court cases that says that's bad, that you can't do that, and so, the courts generally have approved of this way of operating with conditional zoning for a long time. So, I don't buy the argument that, oh, it's not in your ordinance, therefore, you can't do it. That's not gonna be the case. I also reject the other arguments, which not too many, I don't think anybody brought up tonight, maybe they did, spot zoning. This isn't spot zoning. I mean, there's too much diversity in your neighborhood to have this be spot zoning, plus it's never operated as a single-family zoning. But I, too, have the same, you know, reservations about this particular group of people who are proposing this. I mean, they have not been good actors, they have not been responsible owners over time, they're, they've, not understanding the requirement to take the asbestos out of a building before you demolish, that's a big one. As an environmental lawyer, that's a big issue. Granted, Eagle is on the case, and they're gonna make sure that they comply, and they're the appropriate people to do it. Mr. Twing is right, we don't have any jurisdiction there, we've been preempted by the state, and the state is doing the right thing. But that just gives me pause, as to what other issues are gonna come up. But on the other hand, on the other hand, this is an adoptive reuse of an existing building, and that's something that we have long wanted to happen in our community. We don't want historic buildings torn down, if we can avoid it. This is not the most beautiful historic building that we've ever seen, but on the other hand, it's, as they say, it's structurally sound, it has use as a structure, and with the proper renovation, it could effectively work as a multifamily housing. So, the question in my mind is, is do you bite the bullet and give these guys a chance to get their act together and do the right thing? Or do we say no, we turn them down, and then, as I, I agree with Commissioner Douglas, it's gonna sit there for another period of years, until someone else figures out another possible use for it. And is that good for the community? Is that good for the neighborhood? I don't think so. So, just like everybody else here at the table, I kinda go back and forth. I think if I were to say, right now, I would say, I would be willing to go forward with it and be willing to give these guys a chance to develop a project that I think is appropriate for the neighborhood. And if they continue to mess it up, then we pull the plug and say, okay, you know, for building violations, for Eagle violations, for the fact that you've, you know, you've just not done the right thing, you know, you're done. You know, we're not gonna allow you to continue with the project. But I think at this point in time, I'm willing to at least give them a chance.
I think this is a case of the devil you know versus the devil you don't. And when I look at the history of this property, you know, I think the gentleman came up here so articulately explained, like, back in 1939, you know, the house was built across the street, they've seen a lot. When it was a fully functioning assisted living facility, the streets were packed with cars and all of that, which makes sense, you know, given if it was 89 beds or whatever it was throughout history, you would have people visiting their family, certainly a more intensive use than any sort of residential use. Back a while ago, there was, I take Commissioner Colo at his research word, 16 townhomes presented. I was part of this commission at the time, I believe, and that project was denied. The neighbors had issue with the density, and that was 16 units, not 25. But again, going back to the devil you know versus the devil you don't, where my concern is, and I appreciate everybody coming out, I can't say your feelings are wrong, I can't say that your feelings are inappropriate, or that they're not real or legit. The challenge that we have is, so, let's say the city commission denies it tonight, okay? The owner of this property is going to take the next step. That next step could be holding onto the property for a number of different years. I believe that, is the gentleman that owns this property, Dr. Elder, is he a cardiologist?
Right.
Okay, so, he's got probably a very busy plate, and probably, you know, lots of priorities in his life, and he's made a decision to put a project ahead of us, but that could sit vacant for a number of years. It's not like if someone appeared on the property and we're paying a mortgage on it and it was a challenge. So that could be one possible. The other outcome is, they go back, regroup, and they decide that, you know, they're gonna go down a PUD approach, and you heard some commissioners here that seem open to even more density, higher height, environmental considerations, maybe similar to the townhome project, all of that, that could be something that may not be as welcome to the neighborhood as this project. I do believe, and I ran some math at the Planning Commission, the other option is, the developer could sell the land, and even at what he paid for it or liquidate it, whatever it may be. The only people that are gonna touch this, if it's rejected, you know, this property's rejected again, are folks that aren't gonna certainly do multifamily, but that burden of demolishing the building and putting three homes up there is gonna necessitate, if you do the math, gigantic homes that fill out the entire footprint, 35-foot, and even then, I don't know if the math works, okay? And so those people, those homes will probably be filled with families, you know, so you might have 25 people now, but those homes could be filled with a number of people parking in the street, moving in and out of the driveway, so it's not zero traffic, it's not a park. So there's the temptation to find that perfect project. And this commission, I can't remember if it was Commissioner Douglas or Commissioner Purush, said, we don't get to pick and choose what the projects are. We only get to decide on what's in front of us, and those decisions are, you know, weighing the pros and cons, taking into account all of the neighborhood feedback, but also, for the greater community as a whole, you know, what's gonna happen with this project. I drive by it, I mean, frequently during the week, and I go right through Fourth, that's where I get off at Woodward, that's my route, drive down, probably the guy going two miles below the speed limit, frustrating maybe some of the neighbors on the road. But if you, we do have real situations like Demo's property, where this thing is probably gonna remain a vacant eyesore for years to come. Whether that was the right project then or not, the reality is, is that we really have to consider in our calculus here, the devil you know versus devil you don't. This project doesn't make me jump up and down. I can tell you, that same Planning Commission meeting, we had an amazing project that, you know, was looking to move towards net zero, required some variances, a lot of tough decision criteria, but it had a power, it had something there that we could grasp onto. This one doesn't necessarily do it, but it doesn't mean that the architect and the developer couldn't come back with something that would provide an explicit wow, but I'm going to guess that wouldn't meet the, wouldn't be satisfactory to the neighborhood. It would probably require more density, it would probably require something else, but that's not a certainty. What's likely also are all those other options that I mentioned. So I'm not wowed by it, I do see a number of, I say mild benefits that fit the community's needs. I'm inclined to support it, not overwhelmingly, with a tremendous amount of energy, but I'm really concerned that after a decade and after previous proposals being turned down, that the plight of this property will remain the same sort of blighted situation for years to come. And that's just my opinion and my experience with other parcels in the city, but I'm open to ideas.
Mr. Lal?
I just wanted to let the commission know, because I'm not sure if you're aware of the statute, and I only offer this because I know I've heard some comments from commissioners about getting this project to move, if this did get approved, getting the project to move and to get to completion. In the statute that we follow, it does allow you to put a time period in which the conditions apply to the land. If they fail to meet that, those conditions within that time period, the property would, by law, revert to its former zoning classification. If, that way, the property won't be rezoned multifamily, and it'll revert back to where it's at. And that's just one thing. And if they don't meet it, it reverts back unless they ask for an extension of this commission, which it can approve or deny it as discretion. So I do wanted to offer that if that was, I don't believe the commission might be aware of that condition that exists under state law.
Well, so what, I mean, what action could we define that would be quantifiable, provable? Hi, Mr. Twing?
Well, I just wanted to address the time period part. This is a first reading. Generally, in between, if you were to approve it this evening, we would bring back a conditional rezoning agreement with, to you. That standard agreement has a time period in it. Generally speaking, it's somewhere between 12 months to 18 months, depending on their construction period, and it's a discussion that goes on with the developer. So that conditional rezoning agreement will include a time period for your review and discussion.
Excellent, thank you.
And the only thing I want to remind everyone too is, you do have a protest petition in front of you, and my comments and Mr. Lal's comments earlier, which play in.
Yeah, maybe we ask a question about the protest petition, what that means in terms of?
Since Director Twing has, and his staff haven't been able to verify if the requisite number are sufficient to actually force the, or increase the vote requirement to pass this from four, which is a simple majority, to an actual two-thirds vote, which would require five of you to vote in the affirmative. And so that's, and this is why Mr. Twing said earlier that if there was five or more that were inclined to approve it, there wouldn't be an issue, or if there were more than the opposite inclined to deny it, it wouldn't, of course, it wouldn't be an issue. But if it was very close, the recommendation would be probably to postpone this until the next meeting to allow staff to verify the signatures and to ensure that they do meet the statutory requirements on a protest petition.
Okay, so the protest petition requires a supermajority vote of five to two. I mean, I'm just basing it on comments here, we're probably at a four to three, maybe...
I have a way to find out.
Well, if we, if it, just one second, Commissioner Douglas, if you will.
That's right, I'm not making any more motions.
If it does pass four to three, and then there's the, you know, Mr. Twing has his, you know, staff evaluate the protest petition, and it comes out to be satisfactory, then does that kill the project, or does that require a revote, or does that require, how does the timing of all that work? Because what I don't want to do is create any legal issues. If it's four to three here, the protest petition goes through, and it kills the project, and there's a legal pathway for that, that's okay. I just don't want to create all these gyrations.
There's, there's two ways I can think of, is one, based on earlier discussion with Mr. Twing, we do have a second vote coming up at the second reading, which would be the formal vote, which either approves or denies. But to answer your question or your concern about, you know, the four-three vote and it didn't meet, there is a, and I'm sure all of you are aware of a motion for reconsideration process under Robert's Rules of Order, that allows you to make that motion to reconsider the actual vote that would occur tonight if it was a four to three to approve, to be able to bring back this item, in essence, back to, you know, before you, to vote on the motion for reconsideration, if you vote to, in favor of the reconsideration, to actually undo your vote, you would undo it and then can start over with a new vote at that time. It's a little complicated, it's something that was, we had, I have previous experience in another state, but it's under Robert's Rules of Order, it is not necessarily a zoning type of issue. So those are the two requirements, and I think the, you know, I can say that if you do vote and it does end up four-three passing, you do have that final vote at the end, next, when this comes back for the second reading, and to make the final vote, which, if it requires a protest petition, you would need five at that time.
Okay, so you could add the reconsideration, and, or on the second vote, it would just be a vote, and if it didn't meet the threshold of five to two, then it would be denied, and if it was a four-three vote, it would, anything four-three and below, it would be denied.
Right, and definitely on the second vote, a four-three would be a denial.
But it wouldn't trip us up from any sort of, like, legal position where, hey, you didn't vote the right way, we have to resubmit everything? I just don't want to create a bunch of extra work for staff, maybe that's why your recommendation is to postpone it, just to know for sure. I'm not worried what the outcome is, I mean, the rules are the rules, the votes are the votes, and, you know, the petition's the petition, and all of that should play together.
On a scale from safest to riskiest, I mean, the safest would be to actually postpone, and there would be no doubt as to, when you come back, whether or not they met the threshold requirement to force the protest petition vote. The other is to go forward under the option I provided, which the vote, if it's four-three, moves on and you have a final vote. And then the last one, of course, yeah, those are the two options. Well, the motion for reconsideration was a third, but it is a little bit more complex and more steps.
And you're dependent on the people that were on the winning side of the argument to make that motion, which I think this body would be disagreeable, but it's still a small risk.
It is, and so, you know, that's, those are the options before you.
Commissioner Purush.
Just to avoid all the confusion and all of the back and forth, and I'm not sure I understand this whole thing, issues that inevitably occur in the public, I will move that we will postpone this to the next meeting, to give the staff time to evaluate the protest petition and give us an indication as to whether or not it's valid and what that means for our required votes on this project.
Motion by Commissioner Purush, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion. Commissioner Colo.
I think that also gives the developer two weeks to kind of take in some of the comments they've heard at this table tonight, and maybe consider, do they want to keep on moving forward with this plan, do they want to take it back, maybe reconsider changes, amendments, et cetera, that might be a little bit more palatable to those of us who might be voting no right now. So I think that this is a good reset for the entire thing, that could really potentially be beneficial to the community in that.
Commissioner Dubon?
Oh, yeah, I would support the motion, because I think it's important to make sure that we are proceeding in a way that is properly handling the protest petition.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, I don't want, if there's a protest petition out there, and it's got the signatures, and it's good and valid, let's take the opportunity to make sure that we take it into consideration, so we don't have any unusual entanglements. I know all of you are patiently waiting for a decision on this, I think you appreciate all the work that goes into having to evaluate, you know, the needs of what you guys have versus the overall community. And like I say, I'm not so overwhelmed with joy with this project that, you know, we need to decide on it tonight, but, you know, postponing it will mean we'll push it out a couple weeks, and then the threshold very well could be five to two. And, you know, but in that time, you know, opinions can change, so we'll see where it goes. So any other discussion on pushing it out? Okay, I think it's the safest bet to make sure we don't have any issues. And by mean issues, I mean, creating a lot of headaches for our legal team to figure out what comes before the law and everything. All right, so I'll call for the vote, all who favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Motion passes. All right, very good. All right, this brings us to number 11, approval of March 2023 Traffic Committee Resolutions. Chief Engineer Donahue.
Do you want to let the room clear out a little bit?
Sure.
You guys need to take a five-minute break?
Late.
No.
That wasn't the answer to the question.
I need a break.
Now would be the time.
Where's my gift? Where's my gift? If I drip your night, I'd be driving over there to find out what that is.
A GIF?
Yeah, well, it's gonna be my morning. It's not, you're saying, you're saying a GIF?
The people that create it say GIF.
Okay.
You want me to send you a GIF?
A GIF, but yes.
Then what is the peanut butter brand called?
Wait, I'm the one who says it's GIF. Dr. Beth?
The J or G?
No, I think peanut butter is a GIF.
Oh, okay.
Picture, image, it's a GIF.
Am I supposed to say it about something in particular?
It's connected, mate.
Oh, that one, oh, but you didn't respond to my last three, I thought we were having a break.
I'm just, I did.
All right.
You say that, but we lost decorum.
It's like, it's like a circus here.
Sorry, I thought we were taking a break.
Is this not a break?
I think it's a break.
It's great, did you hear the gavel go?
Colo's not here.
All right, let me get control of this room. Now, where's decorum?
Guess so.
All right, so we're gonna continue.
City Engineer Donahue.
Yes, and I'm here to remember the recommendations from the Royal Oak Citizens Traffic Committee. This is from their March 28 meeting, chaired by Dan Goddick. I have four proposed resolutions for you this evening, and I'm happy to take any questions on it, and I'll note that the Traffic Committee voted unanimously on all four resolutions presented. So I have some visual aids here just to kind of help clarify a few of the things. So our first item is from 6A, this was a recommendation to install three speed humps on Benjamin Avenue. This is between Woodward and Carmen. The petitioner here was able to get 88% of the properties to sign in favor of installation, I think the highest I've ever seen on a petition, so all other speed hump criteria was met for this location. So if approved, staff would add this to one of our concrete construction projects for installation this summer, and then we'd also install the associated speed hump signage that goes along with each speed hump there. Our next one is item 6B, this was a request to prevent wrong-way drivers on Northwood Boulevard at Crooks Road. So as you know, Northwood is a divided boulevard, and residents are complaining that people are turning from Crooks onto the wrong side of Northwood here, people that are not familiar with the area. So the committee is recommending installation of do not enter signs at Crooks Road, so that's these two red symbols here. And then they also want to rotate, there's a do not enter sign for this turnaround here, so when you're looking at it from Crooks is adjacent to Adams Elementary. We looked at the three-year accident history. There were no crashes here, but the existing site distance for people driving southbound on Linwood trying to turn onto Webster is less than the recommended minimum threshold. So eliminating some of the parking on the northeast corner here is recommended to improve that site distance. We came up with a few different options to give, you know, various site distance lengths. Ultimately, staff and the committee preferred the option that removes as little parking as possible, just knowing that this area is heavily used, especially for school pickup, and just for residents in the area. So the committee is recommending that we install a no-parking-be-on sign where the A is here. That would still leave a 20-foot parking space between this driveway and that sign, so we basically lose one spot that is there right now. And so they would install the sign, and then also eliminate the, there's some striping on the road, so we'd grind that off to align with the new sign location there. Last one is really close to that, just a little bit down the road on Webster. This is at Galpin. Here, it's again a site distance complaint. We actually did have a pretty decent crash history of four accidents in a three-year period. So the existing site distance here for vehicles that are sitting on Galpin, either heading southbound or northbound, it's less than the, the minimum recommended threshold. So again, we looked at this and came up with, if we eliminate parking where the, these red shaded boxes are shown, that would get you your minimum threshold that we're looking for, 155 feet of site distance. We could do more, but it was, it was like three lost spots on every single corner there, every four corners. So it was a lot to lose, and considering this was multifamily housing, we, we knew that those spaces are used pretty regularly. So similar recommendation as the last one, to install no parking beyond signs, or no parking this side of sign, signs, and then remove the associated road striping to align with the new sign locations there. And that's all I have for you tonight.
Questions? Commissioner Duba.
Uh, yeah, with unanimous approval of the recommendations from the Traffic Committee, and actual vocal support for one of the recommendations, I'll move for approval of all four resolutions.
Yeah, we have a motion by Commissioner Duba, second by Commissioner Purush. Discussion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
It's okay.
Motion passes. The case of the giggles this late at night?
The case of the wanting to talk, but it's okay.
We'll make it up next time.
That's right.
All right, that brings us to item 12, approval of road millage ballot language. As a reminder, in case I forget, oh, thank you, take care. This is a roll call vote. Correct Ms. House?
Correct.
All right. So, you have some language in front of us, Mr. Leal or Ms. Donahue, who's gonna take the lead on this one?
Okay.
So our road millage, as you know, expires in 2024, and at the February 27 meeting, I presented plans for a road millage renewal, which would be another 10-year program from 2025 to 2034. And that plan would focus on our major roads rather than our locals, which is what we've been working on these past eight years, soon to be 10. But we'd also look at continuing maintenance on local roads and doing some sidewalk improvements. And so at that February 27 meeting, there's quite a detailed plan laid out there of, of what streets we do in what years, what the budget is per street, and how we plan to spend that money. So that's available online for the February 27 meeting. The city attorney did send the draft language that we came up with for the ballots to the attorney general's office for preliminary review, and they did give us some minor corrections, tweaks to make. So that's the language that's presented to you tonight. And I think there was another comment, during public comment, about the, the headley rollback rates that are in here. So according to our city assessor, the headley rollback factor will be 1.00000, so there shouldn't be a change from what the rate was last year. I think Mr. Brink might have more information on, like, if that can be tweaked, we may want to look at adjusting the resolution for that. But otherwise, all the language here is in front of you tonight. There's a few resolutions here. There's the current and the proposed charter language to renew the millage in additional 10 years. And then there's the resolution that directs the city clerk to transmit the resolution to the governor and AG's office, and also to publish the charter language. And then finally, the actual recommended language for the November 7, 2023 ballot is on there.
Questions?
So are we seeing that the headley rollback is, there's no headley rollback this year?
That's what I was told. I don't claim to know, be an expert on that, but.
Anybody? Mr. Leal, nobody? Nobody knows?
No. I drafted the language. I rely on finance and the assessor for the actual numbers to put, to plug in those two values.
Okay, and if, if we were to approve this today, could we approve it with final check of those numbers through finance?
Yes, I, yes, you can. That's, that's your option.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Davis.
So looking at the summary language, the, the millage's last, the last phrase is "to depry the costs of maintaining, repairing, and reconstructing roads and rights of way in the city of Royal Oak." Does rights of way include sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. Okay.
Commissioner Macy.
Question was asked a public comment. Ms. Donahue, how well we did with our last millage in terms of our goals, and how far we got?
So we've built eight years. We're in our ninth year right now. We are on track. Through last year, we were doing great. This year, some of the prices did come in high. So there's a few streets that will be kicked into this, this new millage, primarily recon, like, concrete-full reconstruct streets. But otherwise, we're on track to, to update all the streets that we promised to, to improve. So I think it's been a very successful program.
And on that question, all of those results, I find them online, right? You guys publish everything that's been completed, and it's pretty good on your-
Usually in February or March. So the February 27th one, it has a map of what we did this past year, a map of what we've done for all eight years, and kind of how our PISA rating has improved over those years.
So if I asked a question like, where has this money even gone, or what have we done with it, just pontificating, I could go to a simple Google search, or literally go to the city engineer website, and it's right there, and find answers to all of those questions.
Correct.
Seems simple enough. Thank you.
It's wildly detailed.
I know. I see, I look at it, because I get a lot of folks that say, when's my road getting paid? And I'm like, one second, before I respond to this email. Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Actually, along those lines, too, our goal originally was a PISA score of five, and I believe we're at 5.18 right now, right?
Mm-hmm.
And that was, I mean, how low is 4.63? So there's been considerable work to get that up there at this point.
Doesn't sound like much, but yes.
That's it?
It doesn't sound like a big jump, but it is a big jump, so yes.
I mean, what's a typical movement in a year? It's tenths, tenths of 100%, right?
Tents has been good for us. Some, a couple of years, we actually had to dip down, but then the next year, we brought it back up, so.
So, you know, they've removed, you know, almost six tenths of the percent, so it's quite phenomenal. Also, along those lines, I think it's important to remember that right now, we're at the end of the, the cycle, and you saved the worst for last, right? These are roads that had to be repaired, that are not in great condition, so you could maintain and not have to put too much money into exist, roads that had a higher score, correct?
Yeah, that's the general theory of pavement management, is to spend your money the wisest way possible. You want to keep your good roads staying good or fair, and the ones that are already kind of falling apart, continue to let those go till you can get to them, while you keep those other roads in good condition. So most people hate when I tell them that. They, and it's normal. Like, you think the opposite would be true, that you hit the worst first and get it fixed right away, but you're correct, yeah, that's the best way to spend our funds.
Because those ones that were, like, moderate, have deteriorated to a very poor condition over the 10 years of the millage, eventually.
Right, that's correct.
And then, can you just give us, I mean, you detailed this in February, but well, can you just give us a brief overview of the major roads that you're planning to do this year, or in the next 10, next decade?
Oh, so there is a map online. It's romy.gov/roadmillajrenewal, and I think there's a link in the, the commission letter as well, from February 27, that shows what, what roads, what years. And it's, we're basically hitting every major road that hasn't been improved in the last, say, five years or so, while also continuing to joint-steel the major roads that we've done recently, so that those, you know, we don't want to lose that, that benefit that we just put into those roads. So we're basically hitting everything. It's just a matter of, like, what road we get to do first. So we've shuffled them around a little bit. Hopefully, we continue to get grants. As, as those come in, we'll have to shuffle again, because those usually have time restrictions on them, but it's laid out pretty detailed.
Yeah, if I recall, these are, like, the major corridors into the city, the roads that are heavily traveled to get people around as efficiently as possible, for the most part.
That's correct, and it's the roads that we, we usually can't get grant funding for, to, like, Catalpa, Webster. Like, they don't have enough traffic to get funding, but they're definitely really important in this city. People use them all the time, and they're falling apart. So, so this program is ideal for streets like that.
It's kind of like here, you took into the neighborhoods and applied it to the larger city roads.
Correct.
But then at the same time, you're not going to stop, you're going to continue to maintain the city, the neighborhood roads also, right?
Yes.
And if we stop maintaining them, they're gonna crumble again, and potentially in a decade, we're back to a spot where the roads are just terrible.
I don't know if we'll be terrible, but, yeah, if you don't take care of something, it will eventually fall apart. So continuing that maintenance on a cyclical basis is, is my recommendation.
Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
Just have a question for the city attorney. From what I understand, when Madam Clerk sends this, this language to the AG's office, it has to be accompanied by the minutes where it was approved this evening. So if those, if the headley numbers change, would this have to come back before us so that the minutes are accurate that accompanies the language to the AG's office?
You could certainly ask it to come back. The AG does not look at the actual values. They look at the language itself, and to make sure. So the values could change, but if, if this commission feels more comfortable, if they do end up changing, after consulting with the finance director and the assessor again, then you, you can certainly ask for us to bring it back again, if, if you want. Or you can give us the authority in, as part of your motion, in a resolution, to allow us to change those, too.
Looking at the face of Ms. House, she looks concerned with that.
Well, just, when I send this, this language to the county clerk's office for the ballot, there's no changing it after it's been approved. So I mean, we're, it's only April. There's definitely time, that's the first that I heard of, that some of these numbers might be changing. So, I mean, it is definitely, as the, as Attorney Leal said, you can go ahead and prove it as is, and if for some reason, any numbers are changed, we can bring it back to you for another vote on it. So that's up to you.
So, just a quick question. Was this our assessor, finance director, like, at what level approved these numbers in here?
So I'd ask the question on February 27, right after we got approval to move forward with the language. And I asked our finance director, who consulted Mr. Gattnerman, and had said that this would be a 1.0, so, so no change in the numbers that we had from last year.
And we don't anticipate that if we go back to them, that that number's gonna change from February 27? You know what I mean?
I didn't ask that question. I thought that was good to go.
And the other, I think the question at public comment was more, hey, in July, it's an all-new tax levy, so you'll put this out in September, so it'll be, you know, a new rollback. Does that create any issues as well? I think that was maybe more the que, not whether or not our 1.0 is the right answer or not, but rather, do you have to be predictive of what it's gonna look like in July? So in September, when it's on the ballot, they're looking at a July rate that maybe hasn't been established yet, because we haven't approved the budget.
Potentially. My, my, the way I phrased the question was, for fiscal year 23, 24, what will our, what do you predict this to be? And they said it would be 1.0 factor. But, but like I said, I didn't follow up or say, are you sure? Like, I just took it as fact.
Well, then it's too late, if you wait till July anyway, so you have to predict.
You could always postpone this, if you'd like. If you, if you want to be very certain, we could always postpone it.
Commissioner Colo?
Yeah, I'm also not, I don't want to throw everything into a halt because of one comment, a public comment, right? Like, we have special staff, we put this together, and we're being told that this is right. I'd be more inclined to approve it with the condition that, you know, that they check again, and if they do check, send it back to us before sending it to the county clerk for reconsideration.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think that's probably the best way to move forward, right?
It's a right answer.
Motion.
Okay, motion to that effect, second by Commissioner Purush. Sorry, my neck.
Discussion.
Okay.
Roll call.
I'll do, yeah, I'll get to that. I'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with the motion maker, Commissioner Colo.
Yeah.
Commissioner Purush.
Yes.
Commissioner Macy.
Yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Duba?
Yes.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt?
Yes.
All right. Six yeses.
So close.
Seven yeses. Sorry, counting everybody else, not.
That's why you should have had dinner tonight.
I know.
Someone check his blood sugar.
Um, is it hot in here, or is it my blood sugar dropping?
It's warm.
Okay, good.
Manopause.
The building systems turned off.
Manopause.
Wow, thank you. All right, um, let me get back onto this agenda. So, okay, so, good? We're set? Perfect. All right, the award, this is the Award of Contract Cap 2360 Hudson Park Improvements Program, Year 2022, Community Development Block Grant. I see Mr. Murphy here.
Good evening.
Reference several times earlier tonight.
Good evening. On March 23, we had a bid opening for improvements at Hudson Park, and those improvements include a new soccer field, new playground equipment, a basketball court, a walking path, trees, benches, et cetera. The bid, the low bid response was significantly higher than the entire budget for the project itself. The low bid response was a little less than $713,000. This year's Community Development Block Grant program has $500,000 associated with the entire budget for the project. The entire budget for the project needs to include the things that have already occurred, like a survey and design work, and also for us to hire a firm in order to supervise the work that's being done by the contractor. And if you'll look on the screen, you can see the approximate budget that we believe, based on the low bid response, the, the budget that we believe would be appropriate for, needed to implement the project as designed. So that's a significantly higher dollar amount at $864,000-ish dollars, compared to the $500,000 that was budgeted with the CDBG program. So in order to accomplish the project, the city commission will need to determine an alternative funding source to fill that gap. In light of that, at last Thursday's Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board discussed this particular project, and whether they wanted to recommend that recent, the recent Parks and Rec Millage funds should be utilized, to suggest to the city commission, that those funds be utilized to fill that gap, in order to be able to implement the project as designed. And so they decided, they unanimously adopted a motion, and Commissioner Macy can perhaps fill us in with a little more details, but they adopted a motion to not suggest that the Parks and Rec Millage funds be utilized to make up the difference. So if the city commission does wish to proceed forward with the project as designed, we would need to come up with an alternative funding source to accomplish that. There's a suggested motion that has that gap addressed, and, and you'll see in that blank space, the dollar amount, and from what source. So if, if the city commission is able to come up with that dollar difference, $636, $600, $363 and nine, $693 from some alternative funding source, there's a suggested motion, which also includes awarding the contract to that low bid responder.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about Parks and Rec's vote on this, and also give a little more information about what they were considering when they looked at this. So, I mean, I'll just say, generally, so the, the millage has in it, set aside, sort of, not in any kind of firm air, but this is what we were told going into, about $500,000 for capital improvements. And as we can see, that doesn't go very far, and so there's a lot of things that are playing into the capital improvement project over the course of years, and none of them are to fund the overages from CDBG projects in our city. CDBG funds can only go towards certain parks, and the Parks and Mil, Parks Millage funds can go to other parks and other things in our city. So it didn't seem to us like a good use of, of those funds.
need to come up with an alternative funding source to accomplish that. There's a suggested motion that has that gap addressed, and you'll see in that blank space, the dollar amount and from what source. So if if the city commission is able to come up with that dollar difference, $636, $600, $363 and nine, $693 from some alternative funding source, there's a suggested motion which also includes awarding the contract to that low bid responder.
Yeah, I'm happy to talk about Parks and Rec's vote on this and also give a little more information about what they were considering when they looked at this. So, I mean, I'll just say generally, so the the village has in it set aside sort of, not in any kind of firm air, but this is what we were told going into, about $500,000 for capital improvements. And as we can see, that doesn't go very far. And so there's a lot of things that are playing into the capital improvement project over the course of years, and none of them are to fund the overages from CDBG projects in our city. CDBG funds can only go towards certain parks, and the Parks and Millet, Parks Village funds can go to other parks and other things in our city. So it didn't seem to us like a good use of of those funds. It seems like if we're going to put extra money into these parks, it should be coming out of the general fund and not out of those monies that are set aside for other projects that we've already planned in our city. But I'll also say, it was pretty unanimous as well that we wouldn't have spent $863,000. Like, given that the bids came in too high, we should be paring back what we're asking for. This is not an enormous park. It's very close to another park that was recently redone at very high cost. And the fact that it came in over like 60% of the budget doesn't make us think that we may, that we should be paying for that. It makes us think we should be paring this down and be reasonable. We can't be spending this amount of money on every park based on that square footage. It just doesn't, it doesn't make sense. And I'll say that when this came in front of this body last year as a CDBG fund, it also was not what Parks and Rec had recommended that we spend our CDBG funds on priority, in terms of priorities, which we'll come up again later in this same meeting. So to put $863,000 into this park, no one at Parks and Rec thought it was a good use of funds, and we talked about how we could pare it back. It did sound, from what staff was saying, like it's a challenge to pare it back. Nobody wants to take away some of these great amenities that have been designed for this park. So, you know, I leave it to the to the commission to decide how we use that money, but that $363,000 could put in three tennis courts somewhere, and we'd still be spending $500,000, half a million dollars on this park. So, yes, that is, that is the summary of how Parks and Rec looked at this situation.
Any other comments?
So I'll I'll add some comments to this. We have a kind of a couple of unique pieces of information. One, that we went through the Parks and Rec master plan, and I believe that it's identified these type of uses and improvements of this particular park. To abandon this or to to scale that back, we wouldn't be able to achieve all the improvements that have been identified. I think unfortunately, in the world of construction, we are going to be looking at higher cost on any project moving forward. So where where we do have an opportunity, there is a portion that has not been identified under the ARPA program that we could allocate to this project to move that forward, that we have proposal. And in order to complete that in combination with the CDBG program, that those improvements could be carried out. At the same time, it may be worthwhile, I haven't worked directly on this project, but there are instances, and we've done this in Centennial Commons, of looking at value engineering. But to reduce the the scope of that and whether it's active recreation or children's activities and things like that, we don't want to diminish the value of that at the same time. But I'm certainly worthwhile to to take a look at it further, but but really to move this along, that I'm assuming that the time is of the essence, that we we need to move this along or just simply abandon that. So there's a pathway that we can do this and utilize those funds. So if that's deemed appropriate, that is a way to 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 carry this forward.
Mr. Collo.
I just have one question. Did you just say if we don't add, if we don't spend the extra $300,000, we have to abandon the whole project?
I'm not suggesting that, but I don't know what the procedures are, that it may not be, it'd be looking at a different project to allocate those funds. I mean, we certainly have to spend the CDBG, but if we're not going to accomplish this, you know, it's, are we looking at a half completed project, you know? Is that an acceptable alternative?
Valid for a certain amount of time. I don't know that off the top of my head, but typically it's a 30, 60, or 90 day period. So the bid is only valid for a certain amount of 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 time in order for us to act upon entering into contract with them. We do need to expend our CDBG funds in a timely manner. I don't believe that if you postponed or delayed that it would cause us any great consternation at this point in time, but certainly is a general factor.
Yeah, I'll listen for public attention.
Commissioner Perush?
Based on what Mr. Break said, that there probably are ARPA funds available for the balance, I would be inclined to move ahead with this just because there are only a certain number of parks that are actually eligible in the CDBG program. Granted, those boundaries move around a little bit, but this might be the last opportunity to actually do any improvements in that park at all. And and given that, I would rather seize the moment and do it and get it done and get it done right. So given that, I will move approval of this motion, allocating the $500,000 from CDBG funds and then the balance from ARPA funds to pay for this project.
Second by Commissioner Dubach. Okay, discussion? Commissioner Hunt?
I would, I would agree with Commissioner Perush's assessment here. Also, I understand that we're in the process of allocating the use of our ARPA funds. There was recently a news article indicating that there are a number of mayors across the this country that are concerned with, you know, the clawback that may be coming soon. And being able to dedicate some of those funds to a project that we know is going to get done soon, I'd be willing to, even though maybe a bit higher than we were looking to spend in this particular park, I would be willing to utilize some of those funds for this project.
I mean, I get Commissioner Macy's point through and through. I just think with, you know, the $500,000 on the table, you know, going back, going through that process, do you give up 500 grand, you know, without, you know, by not wanting to spend an extra few hundred grand? It's a tough position to be in. Everything she says makes sense. I just don't want to give up that 500 grand because Commissioner Perush is right. This is probably with the net new census data and everything going on, this is going to be the last shot. You know, there's maybe a couple of value engineer things in here, you know, concrete pad and vinyl surround for seasonal portable toilet. I don't know if the costs go up or whatever, maybe look at that. You know, there's a house right across the street, just knock on the door, you can use the toilet anytime you want. It's very welcoming home. Buy a couple of cheap bathroom signs for that house. But yeah, I mean, I think that, and plus, as we're, I mean, this isn't just, I mean, we think about the location of this park where it's at, it's actually a bridge park between a lot of the multifamily development we have on the other side of, to the east, or I'm sorry, to the west. And, you know, you'll get a lot of folks coming and using it as well there to recreate. So, yeah, it's a tough position, but I tend to lean towards what Commissioner Perush is recommending. Anybody else? All right, call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No opposed?
No.
All right. This brings us to, where are we at now? Approval of Community Development Block Grant Program Year 2023 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Murphy?
For the past few months, the Rehabilitation Board of Appeals has been reviewing potential projects for next fiscal year through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And at their most recent meeting, they held a public hearing, and they adopted a resolution with a list of recommended activities and associated funding levels for next fiscal year in light of the dollar amount that we're going to be receiving from the federal government. So I know it's late, but I will very quickly go through those because I think it's relevant to our conversation. They're recommending the same dollar amount associated that that the Senior Center Roses Program, which provides in-home supportive services like lawn mowings, snow removal, personal, personal chores for eligible single-family homeowners. And that's the same dollar amount as this current year, $35,000. They're also suggesting to allocate funds to South, the South Oakland Shelter, and they provide rental assistance to individuals, modest income individuals, who are in need to prevent eviction. And that's the same dollar amount as this year as well. Also, $30,000 to the South Oakland Citizens for the Olmus. They operate the day shelter program at 13 Mile and Crooks at Star Presbyterian Church. Half a million dollars for the single-family housing rehab program, which our office administers to assist individuals with the rehabilitation of their single-family homes. $900,000 for improvements at Lockman Park and Claussen Park, $135,000 for improvements at Claussen Park. And can also program administration funds and and a small amount of overall contingency funds for the for the program. One of the conversations at the meeting was that the board, the Rehabilitation Board of Appeals had a full understanding that $135,000 wouldn't be enough money to conduct all of the proposed improvements at Claussen Park. So they did adopt a resolution which suggests that if we weren't able to find an alternative funding source for for leveraging to get everything done, that that $135,000 go back into the program's overall contingency fund. The Parks and Rec Advisory Board did discuss the, again, the use, the potential use of the newer village funds in order to assist or in in that effort to leverage to to make these projects happen like Claussen Park and a few others, which Commissioner Macy had spoken with regard to. And they did not take any action to suggest the use of village funds in order to accomplish Claussen Park. So staff has also provided you with two other projects that were presented to the Rehab Board of Appeals. One is $100,000 to fix a failing retaining wall on Webster Road adjacent to the railroad tracks, and another is $35,000 to demolish the former Frazard Clock Tower, the advertising tower for the former auto dealership, which in 2018, the city commission adopted a resolution directing that be demolished. We had provided notice to the property owner. They failed to act. We've actually taken that property now in tax war closure, so we own it. So those are two alternative projects that could potentially be accomplished in light of the $135,000 towards Claussen Park essentially not being enough and not having another alternative funding source in place to accomplish all of those improvements. So you will see a rec, a suggestion motion for the adoption of the recommendation from the Rehab Board of Appeals as well as the recommendation from staff. And of course, the city commission can feel free to choose either of those or something entirely different based on what you decide.
Commissioner Collo? Thank you, Mr. Ray. As the representative on that board, a little bit more background here, too. We actually did not have the Hudson Park bid when we made these recommendations. The bid was open a few days later. So that might change these numbers a little. Our thought with the Claussen Park, you know, the Rehab Board starts four years out to plan like where we may spend money. Lockman Park, Franklin, Lawson, Hudson, what's that? Or, yeah, they were all considered a long time ago, and these are the ones, we can't get into them as we can. So that's why, you know, this year, Lockman Park was the one chosen for the upgrades, which they were not, you know, they'll work with the Parks and Rec Committee, and it's going to be a beautiful park. Commissioner Dubach, I'd make sure you watch out that they don't take away a tennis court, that they add another one back. You want to keep your eye on that one? But it's, these processes take a long time. So we knew we didn't have enough money for Lockman or for Claussen Park. And, you know, this this retaining role has actually been on our list for three years, and we keep on pushing it over. It's not, it has been a high priority of the committee. The idea was we wanted to get this money back into the park system because we know how much we value the upgrades that this provides. So I would say if it can't be for Claussen Park, instead of maybe going to these other recommendations, I would kick that 135 back to the Rehab Board and potentially ask them and Parks and Rec to come up. If Parks and Rec doesn't want it, and Lockman Park or Claussen Park, if that's not where they're improving this year, maybe there's another park within the CDBG boundaries that they're improving. I think, if I recall, it is about a $500,000, $600,000, $600,000 upgrade at Claussen Park.
That's what we budgeted before the March 23rd bid opening for Hudson Park, yes. It's going to be at $900,000. Commissioner Macy?
Well, thank you, Commissioner Collo. As it so happens, Parks and Rec already has an opinion on this because they considered this at the at the last meeting. And this was, so, you know, two years ago, we looked at all of the parks that were in the CDBG and, you know, potential improvements that could be in each of those parks, and we were asked to prioritize them. And our first priority was Warden, and so that's what we sent last year for CDBG consideration. And Rehab Board of Appeals took Warden out and put Hudson in. And so this year, again, we have two different parks that are not Warden. And so I understand there are maybe some concerns about Warden, but the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, which is tasked with looking at the parks and making decisions and prioritizations about what should be handled first, feel pretty strongly that Warden, which is, has a lot of use and is a is a spot that we are afraid is going to lose CDBG status if we don't act on it now. And that was what was discussed at the, discussed at the meeting, and there was a recommendation, I don't know if it made it through here or not, from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board to remove Lockman from this consideration and to replace it with Warden. So there is a, there is a part that that we'd like to do, and it's, it's not somebody in my, my part, Warden's right near me, but Warden is one that gets a lot of use, and part of the consideration is that it could be connected on a walking path around Warden all the way to the the Arboretum and over to Ten Haves. So it it felt like a really good, something we were really excited about and had been pushing forward, and it, there was a lot of frustration on this last meeting that the the recommendations that are coming from this board are set aside and seemingly no feedback given to us.
Commissioner Collo?
Commissioner Macy, I wish you and I would pay a coffee today because we could have gone through some of this. I think one thing that Mr. Murphy is about to tell us with Warden Park is that it's a community park, right? It's so big and grand that it is used by, it has such a central focus. These funds have to be spent on what are considered neighborhood parks. And that is the location, let Mr. Murphy tell you.
We discussed this.
He's already told me 100 times. We've, we've talked about this because Warden Park was on the list, and then it was much like Elk's Park. We, we had talked about upgrading Elk's Park. We want to know if Oaks was built next to it, such, which is such a magnet that draws so many people. It took it out of what staff considered, what staff believes is eligible. So if Warden were eligible, I think we'd be more than happy to take it from Lockman or Claussen over to Warden.
You may respond, Counselor.
Well, it sounds like one agreement, actually, because, I mean, this was discussed at Parks and Rec, and we understand the staff isn't sure if Warden would count. But as we've just seen with the Hudson, with the Hudson bound, if we put Warden in there, ask for it, and then we're rejected, we got to come up with another plan, and look, we'll just put it here in Lockman. But we don't know unless we ask if Warden is eligible. And I guess I just, I, I'm skeptical of the, of the idea that we could not make Warden, which not, it's not a splash pad, it's not something we don't have in other parks, it's fields. It's, we got ball fields is what we have there. Like, I don't understand what makes it a one single community spot other than perhaps its size. So I, I guess I'm skeptical of that, and it feels to me like this is something that we could present and ask, and we put it out there, and if they say no, then we can come back and reconsider. It's not like we're out of, we don't lose the money, my understanding. So it, it feels like we should try.
Or, sorry.
Commissioner Perush?
I was on the Rehab Board for quite a number of years, and we had this discussion about neighborhood park versus community park. And I, my, I'm not the expert that Mr. Murphy is, but my gut feeling is that Warden would not qualify just because it's not designed for a neighborhood use with play structures and all that kind of stuff. It draws from the community, and you just mentioned that it's fields. I mean, people from the entire city and people from outside of the city play on those fields. They draw from the entire community. It's not just a neighborhood park with play structures and sandboxes and so on, in ball fields that are designed for that particular neighborhood. So as I say, I'm not the expert, but my gut feeling is that Warden would, because of its continuous use as a community center for recreational activities for the entire community, it's a community park, not a neighborhood park.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Murphy to rule.
So I'm going to ask Mr. Murphy to rule on the cases presented.
The Parks and Rec manager did an excellent job of identifying every park and all of the facilities in those, in each of those parks. And if you may or may not recall, there was a formula, a formula that's put out by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources where many communities seek grants to conduct these park, their park improvements. And the state has a formula as to a basketball court per so many people, a swimming pool is another one, as per so many people, a tennis court per, play structures per so many people. And I would agree that the current facilities at Warden Park lend themselves to that larger ratio. The size of the current facilities that are there serve a larger population than just the immediate neighborhood. So while it may be located in an eligible neighborhood under the CDBG regulations, the, if we replace one for one the facilities that are there, I believe that there's some hesitation as to whether the facilities serve just that neighborhood or are they having a greater outreach, they're serving a larger portion of the city. I have some hesitation with that, but as Commissioner Macy pointed out, just like all of our projects, we have to submit them to the federal government, and we have to get their approval. If they review it and they determine that it's not an eligible activity, they would let us know, and we would have to, so to speak, go back to the drawing board, and we'd have another crack at allocating the money to a different project. So I provide, I'm providing you my opinion unquestionably. The expert is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Where we get our money from, they'll give us the true answer guaranteed.
House who likes the check is the expert.
Correct.
Commissioner Collo.
Okay, so how about this idea? Let's, we have this one hundred and thirty-five that's kind of sitting out there that we were going to put towards Claussen Park. Maybe we direct staff to take the one hundred and thirty-five and start the design process of Warden Park to submit, because this is, you know, these are projects in the future, right? You know, Hudson Park we approved last year for this year. So maybe we design, start designing Warden Park now and submit it, you know, direct for a submittal. And if it gets approved, then the CDBG Board, the Rehab Board of Appeals will have the option of funding it next year, you know, and we can, we'll have this contingency left over because it's a large facility. It's going to need, this is going to be one of those one hundred, or a hundred, I'm sorry, million-dollar, one point five million-dollar improvements, right, to redo all those fields, the ballpark, the ball diamonds, the credit bit of work. So this is going to be something where I think the Rehab Board and the Parks and Rec Board should probably have a joint meeting and figure this out together as opposed to figuring out the table that maybe we have some commonality here. So maybe I would, I would move to move forward with allocations as presented from the Rehab Board of Appeals, with the exception of changing the one hundred and thirty-five thousand for Claussen Park to exploring Warden Park improvements.
We have a motion by Commissioner Collo, or a second? Second by Commissioner Dubbuck. Discussion, Commissioner Macy.
I mean, it sounds interesting. Fine. Can we, can we ask them to make a plan and not have money to fund it?
No, no. The HUD regulations are very explicit that the money needs to be expended on a final product. So we can't use the fund, any funds to just design park projects. The money has to be, at the end of the day, spent on an eligible shovel improvement project.
Except like with the retaining wall, that we paid for survey for that. We've, did that come out of CDBG funds?
That did come out of the program administration funds because it was such a small dollar amount.
Okay, so can we throw this back in the program administration then? The one hundred and thirty-five back in the program administration so we can use that to make a design, to figure out if that, and then ask or contact at HUD? Or if not called, you know, maybe we have to get the congressional office involved to see if they can, see if that's approved?
I would have, we, we get into the statutory requirement that we can only spend a certain amount of our total dollars on program administration, whether that includes staff time and design costs and things of that nature. I don't know whether that, that taking that one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars and adding it to the two fifty would push us above that percentage. I don't, I don't have the ability to do that math right now.
So what I'm hearing, Mr. Murphy, is that the way the motion was presented, just to have one hundred and thirty-five thousand earmarked for Warden Park would not pass the smell test because you'd have to have one hundred and thirty-five plus, whatever, a million for the shovel-ready improvements you estimate to do. So therefore, if we.
Some physical improvement would need to happen at the end of the day by allocating any dollar amount to an actual project.
So it'd be done on a level to this, okay.
Yes, I can guarantee that.
Commissioner Macy.
So given we don't know about the construction costs because they're obviously more than we expected, could we do a playground for that amount, which is within the plan for Warden, or just a walking path for that amount? I don't know.
Sure, you could, you could do anything that was of that neighborhood scale and, and that we presented that to the federal government and received their input, that they determined that the park in general and what we're proposing to do meets that, what we'll refer to, neighborhood eligibility. Absolutely, we could do that, yes.
Okay, I think, there was a playground in there, right? That's my memory.
Not to my knowledge.
Pretty sure, over, over by.
By the ice strike, right?
No, I think by the doctor's office.
So either way, we take that one hundred and thirty-five to, and if not, if we don't spend it, it would just go into the contingency.
Yes.
So we can approve this motion as is. If not, just staff could figure out what's going on and that, you know, if it's eligible, and then if not, it'll just go into contingency, and we would figure this out.
Yeah, we're asking them to prepare something and send it over to the feds and just to get rejected anyways, and it does require.
I don't think the motion said, I think the motion said explore Warden Park.
Well, I thought it said do the design and explore.
I heard explore Warden Park. I think that's what the person who made the second also heard.
I don't know. It's not necessarily what I heard, but maybe City Clerk Halas?
That's what she heard.
I'll be listening to this again tomorrow.
You could do an amendment to make sure it's clear.
Okay, so I.
I mean, I like the idea, but after Mr. Mercer, Murphy said, I don't like the idea that it would just be rejected, just to do design and work. Because I thought that's not money wasted because we would eventually implement those things.
So is the preference put back into the contingency then?
Yeah, I mean, what we could do is we could go through with this budget, put in the contingency that will still explore Lockman, Warden, Claussen, and the bottom two, and, you know, bring back a plan, I guess. I don't know.
We just send it back to rehab, is that what we're doing?
I don't know. It's almost tomorrow.
What's our timeline? Yeah, I know. What's our timeline?
Start here, seven hours ago tonight.
So the big contention right now, we have a motion on the table, so we got to vote on it. We just clear it. I'm just going to clear this one, okay? And then we can start over. All's in favor, say aye. All's opposed?
No.
Okay.
So I didn't have a motion that failed on the record. Commissioner Dubbuck loves this.
So, so now we're at ground zero. So what I hear in all of this is that there's contention between Lockman and Warden Park, and Claussen Park looks like a loser because we just, the cost is six hundred grand, or not six hundred grand, but it's much higher than the one hundred and thirty-five thousand will permit. So we went down to the retaining wall and demolition of the old clock tower. You know, I think, you know, I think that's probably reasonable to look at Claussen Park a little differently. You know, find other sources of ARPA or whatever funding to take a look at it than just try to say we're going to get something that we can't finish. Or do it right, as Commissioner Perush would say. It's not that we don't want to do Claussen Park right, maybe this isn't the right medium to do it right. So then what we have is just this opening where we could throw the Lockman Park. How would we go about that, Mr. Murphy? Could that motion just say, hey, we go forward with this, but we put the nine hundred thousand in contingency and have, you know, either Lockman or Warden Park, and we have to have, go back to the various boards or what's, we have to go back to the Rehab Board of Appeal? Or do we have, can we make that swap? Or can we make that, we need more information, but we can move the rest forward?
I believe I'm hearing that you're interested in setting one million thirty-five thousand dollars associated to parks that would be eligible.
Yes.
I think that would be appropriate to do that, to state it in that fashion. And then we could go to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and have a continued conversation. And we could possibly design two or three parks, bid them, determine what the bid prices are, and at that point, select the one project or two that we can accomplish at that point.
And knowing that we have a backup either way. If the feds say, sorry, Warden has got too much of a draw, it's too big.
Yes. You will have already designed and bid, we'll say all three that we've been talking about, Lockman, Claussen, and Warden.
And then we got Lockman that we can pop in there if we need to on a moment's notice. Okay, that sounds like a good plan. Glad we had this talk. Okay. All right, does anyone want to make a motion of that effect?
What he said.
All right, a motion that would move forward with the budget as planned here with the elimination of Lockman and Claussen Park as line items and just a generic item that says one million thirty-five thousand for park improvements, with the understanding that we will bid out those elements and that after discussion with the Parks and Rec Board, that, you know, we'll come back, we'll make a decision. And if it happens to be Warden Park, and then it goes through, great. If it doesn't, rejected by the feds, then we have backups.
So moved.
Okay, the motion, is there a second?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Perush. Discussion?
Definitely get listening, I want to.
Yes, Commissioner Collo.
Now, just as Commissioner Macy very ultimately advocated for her board, I do want to point out, the Rehab Board of Appeals spends a lot of time picking out these parks, right? And Lockman Park has been the discussion for quite a while, as was Claussen. So I just, I don't want to be completely dismissive, especially since they are the funding body here, you know, the people spending the money, they've spent, spent a lot of staff time that went into this and a lot of this board's time that went into that. So, you know, I'll support this tonight, I just want to make sure that, you know, I think all three can get in some way, and I think we have the funds to do it. So I hope that Parks, we can work with Parks and Rec, maybe some of them, some of our funds and the one point one three, however much money we have here.
Commissioner Macy.
I just have to say, I mean, I respect the authority that the Rehab Board of Appeals has to divide this up, but it's definitely the purview of Parks and Rec to be prioritizing how we work on these parks, and we set a prioritization to Rehab Board of Appeals, I think, and it was completely ignored.
Well.
Oh, okay, maybe they didn't get it. And in the case, Parks and Rec was mad on Thursday, man, we had some stuff.
I'm glad you were there to take it.
Oh, man.
All right.
Take it or fuel it.
Fuel a mouth, fuel a mouth.
So, so we're going to vote on the motion here in a second, but just real quick, my two cents, I think you have a situation here where the Rehab Board of Appeals, you know, is, is under the understanding that they have to look at projects that are likely to be approved, and I think that's probably the root of it. They probably should have got the feedback, we'll clear it up, no problem, that's how things work. Misunderstandings get fixed, we'll get through it. My only caution is that when we go through this, is what I don't want to say is split the baby among everyone, sprinkle the baby everywhere. And then you just get like, there's no improvements anywhere because you've added a garbage can in each park, you know what I mean? Like, so you got to get, if you're going to do it and it comes down to doing a little bit in each one of these parks that really isn't noticeable, or really improves the quality of life for these neighborhoods.
Yeah.
If it's one of these parks gets really activated and really, you know, I mean, I almost would feel like we should, we should pick one and go with it, not spread it so thin and not get anything among the three parks. But that's my opinion. Just so you guys know.
Loaded.
All right, call for the vote. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, motion passes. Okay, we're on the next topic. Let's get done today. North Main Square LLC, 118 North Main Street, Amendment to Final Planned Unit Development and Site Plan Regarding Lead Cert.
Okay. That is mine. So, good evening, Mayor Fournier and members of the City Commission. This issue is brought back, the initial discussion took place a month and a half ago about making a modification to the PUD as it relates to the lead certification. This was brought up issue and point of the occupancy of the building and the timing of when the lead certification would be conveyed by the, the U.S. Green Building Council. Have worked with the developer to come up with a document that, that outlines in the scenario that such performance, that what is documented appears to be unlikely, but in, in the instance, if the, the building does not reach lead certification, or if there's certain deficiencies that need to be corrected in order to achieve the points, that there is a guaranteed funding source that, that will pay for that. So the, the developer and through their legal counsel has provided the information from a well-respected consultant that, on this point system, in order to achieve lead certification, they denote these, this point system between forty and forty-nine, and that's with a high probability that nearly eighty percent of those points have been achieved. And then there is another range of points that upon verification and documentation that even if they achieve one-half of that, that the building will achieve lead status. We do not have a policy per se. Part of this is not only looking at the case in point, but looking at Vice Chair of the EAB, Woody Gontina, that's been very helpful for me and the staff to come up with a process. And what, what we'd like to do is to work with the EAB to come up with a more formalized process, so we're not customizing this in each and every case. But this is the first one to, to come through. And again, I appreciate the, the technical assistance, and this is outside of my realm, but the U.S. Green Building Council was, had a individual, a staff person that works with state and local government liaison that was extremely helpful in the information that they provided. So nevertheless, we have a resolution to approve this amendment to the PUD agreement, and then also looking at it from a long-term perspective that I would be following up with the Environmental Advisory Board to come up with a solution as we consider future projects to be green certified. So that is the presentation that I have before you and the, the developer as well as the legal counsel is. And I thank you for staying so late in the evening, but they are here to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you want to lock it, Burke?
Wake up, wake up, I spent all my money on the lead certification.
Oh, I was talking to Dennis.
Commissioner Dubbuck. Thank you, Mayor.
So I don't have any questions, I just, I feel like, as Mr. Briggs stated, we kind of, the CFO being the traditional stick, but it's a situation where like, oh, we need a policy around this, or really appreciate the developer working with us to find what I think is an elegant solution, and I think the foundation for, we can build a more consistent system for these kinds of situations. So much thanks to staff for, for moving this forward. Again, this is no indication of, you know, it's clear that the, the developer's been moving forward in good faith, has a very reputable consultant helping them achieve lead certification. And this basically just, you know, regardless of who the developers, make sure that we have a policy in place where when we have an agreement for lead certification, we are, you know, reducing the, the risk that that does not happen to almost zero. So I, I think this is exactly what we're looking for, and greatly appreciate everyone moving this forward. So I mean, unless y'all need to talk or want to talk, I'm happy to move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Dubbuck, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Collo. All right, discussion. Oh, Commissioner Macy, sorry.
I'm sorry, I do have a question. So I like the setup here, like if they've done this, then it's less, if they haven't done it yet, then it's, but, but then when I was looking through the if they've done this, I think the if they've done this is just provide two lists, and doesn't say they actually have to have done any of the lead activities. So.
Well, they have to provide documentation. Basically, what, we're putting the burden back on the developer and through their consultant to verify this information.
Okay, but can, just correct me if I'm wrong, that the first thing they have to do is provide a list of things that they're going to do to provide, to get. And then before they do the circuit, circuit of occupancy, they have to provide us with a list of the things that they did, but that thing could be, I mean, per this, it could be nothing. Like, they could say, oh, we didn't do anything, and then they would suddenly, they provided us the list, and then their bond is only fifty thousand dollars. You see what I mean? Like, it doesn't say, that shows that they met the forty-nine points, or that they, that they should have achieved that, you know, given if they, when they go for lead. It just says that they literally give us a list of things they did. says that they literally give us a list of things they did. Right? I'm sorry, maybe I'm misreading it.
I think chapter, I think point two says it needs to be between X mile points.
At, at the time of commencement, they have to give us a list of what they're planning to do between 40 and 49.
Look at seven.
And then, point three, I'm just, I'm just on points one through four, and then in point three, it says, before they request a certificate of occupancy, they have to give us a list of what they did, but it doesn't say, that, that list could be nothing, and then if it's nothing, I'm not saying it's not gonna be nothing, but I'm just trying to, this is a contract, and I'm trying to make sure that if we're gonna use it as future, a future model, it doesn't, I like the model, but I think we're missing a key element here, which is like, that shows that they did the things that they said they were gonna do in two, or that shows that they got to 40 points as they said they were gonna do in two, and then if lead doesn't certify it, like, that's, then I understand why we wouldn't break it down to 50.
Alright, so the way that I'm understanding that you're asking the question midway in paragraph item number three, it says, "The city at its option may inspect the building to confirm installed whatever the improvements are." So there's the checks and balances that, that the developer's allowing us, we're, we're not just saying, "Oh, we'll take your word for it," we have the ability to, to confirm.
Does anybody understand what I'm saying here?
Can, can I take a second? I, I, I think in paragraph two, Commissioner Macy, it says that they ship, the developer, well, it's not, any developer for using this as a thing, "The developer shall provide a lead checklist, and such, such actions and improvements shall, shall be within the established range."
That they're planning to do.
And then we check that, if they don't do that...
Doesn't say we're checking whether or not they did it, we're just, and the second one is that they give us a list of what they, the third one is that they give us a list of what they actually did, it doesn't say it has to be the things they said in two, it doesn't say it has to be...
Confirm installed lead-related building improvements, though.
But it, okay, alright, maybe, I, you know, it's 11:45, maybe everyone's reading this in a way that I'm missing, but to me, it, I'm not saying you're gonna do this right, but I'm just saying, this reads like you could give us two lists, and then pay $50,000 and do nothing more for lead.
Commissioner, Commissioner Perush?
I know that's not the intention, but I think that's what it says.
Commissioner Perush? Oh, one, one second, Mr. John, I have, Commissioner Perush?
I'm looking at number seven, and it says, "In the event lead certification is not obtained," which means they don't do the things that they say they wanna do, "after appeals and extensions, the bond proceeds shall be restricted and used solely to, to complete the lead certification that they said they were going to do, which they didn't do." So it seems to me the enforcement language is right there in, in number seven.
But that's only $50,000, which is a lot cheaper than achieving lead.
I don't think it's restricted to $50,000.
Commissioner Dubb?
So, my read was that, so, 4B states that if they have not complied with one through three, it provides a $200,000 bond. Three specifically says, "The city inspects to confirm installed lead-related building improvements and representation and documentation that the remaining built improvements are to be completed."
From the list given in two?
Yeah, I mean, isn't that implicit?
I mean, no.
Do you wanna add that line?
That's, that's what I'm, that's all I'm saying, is I think we're just missing the piece here, which is saying, the check in three should be, that something, all required in three is that they provide a list, and then we can check that they did the list, but it doesn't say that it has to be the things that they said they were gonna do.
I'm gonna let the petitioner take this one for a second.
I, I agree that reasonable minds can differ, but it says, "List of actual actions." Now, we use demolition as one, but actual actions means all those things in the, the list in two that we said we were gonna do. If you wanna change the language to clarify that, that's fine with us, and, and the building improvements to achieve the lead certification, referencing the lead certification that we're seeking.
Can we just add, "As described in..."
That's fine.
"...that's described in their preliminary checklist?"
Absolutely.
Okay.
As long as we get out of here by midnight.
Not to be acceptable, but what if they do need to do something else, right? Like, what if they need to do something that's not in that preliminary checklist? I, I, I think we're reading too much into it.
Yeah, they can get the points a different way, you know what I mean? Like, what happens if they have a list to do solar panels, and they realize, "Well, I'm one short solar panel, so I added some other crazy widget to get..."
Okay, 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 list of actual actions of enough, and building improvements of enough points
Sure.
to achieve lead certification.
Okay.
Deal. Deal?
Is that a motion you want to amend?
That is a motion you meant. Sorry, I'll say it again.
Motion to amend. Is there a second to? Alright, I don't know, is people raising fingers, hands? Okay, Commissioner Hunt?
You can, like, just get us out of here.
Okay. Does everyone understand the motion to amend? Alright, I'll call the vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Now we have the regular motion on the table. Any more discussion? Commissioner Macy, on the existing motion?
No, I feel good now. I just had a tiny question.
Okay. Alright, I don't see anybody with any other discussion items, so I'll call for the vote. Those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, Mr. John?
I just wanna say thank you for working, especially Mr. Bragg, to go through all these issues. And I don't know how I'm gonna explain my wife that I was at a city council meeting until midnight, but I'll go to try.
You explain to mine also.
Let the record reflect that I was here for a non-controversial topic. Thank you.
I made it a little controversial.
And we appreciate, by the way, the partnership, because this was new to us as well, so working with somebody that was open to, you know, being creative with us, to set the tone for, as we wanna execute this in the community, we really appreciate your efforts.
It goes both ways. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we are now at item 16, second to last item.
Okay. This was presented to me from a professional association that asked support for this House Bill 5054, which includes funding to help offset pension debt, and what was included in the budget is that communities that are less than 60% funding, that there's 750 million. Now, in our case, because we have financed the pension debt to, for a closed system, that we would not be eligible, this is support for an additional $250 million to be included in the, the governor's budget, and so this was submitted and, and felt worthy of consideration. This is from an apolitical organization, from the City Managers Association, and presenting this for your consideration, that we can submit this to Governor Whitmer and to our representatives for their consideration.
Questions from Mr. Bragg. Commissioner Dubb?
Hey, Mr. Bragg, I've looked at this, it seems reasonable, but I do notice that our recently termed-out state representative and previous longest-serving mayor voted against this bill last session. I'm wondering if you've had any conversation with him about it?
I have not, no.
So, 'cause I haven't had a chance to ask him about it, I don't know if anyone else has, I'd really like to get his thinking on it before sending a resolution of support. And I don't believe this has even been introduced yet this session, so it's not a time pressing matter.
That's not what I've been told, that I, I have, I'm not in direct contact with the legislature. I wanna say that, that's like by mid-month, that it's, it's due, but, you know, if you're not comfortable in, in passing the resolution, we can just table it for now, and it may not be as timely by the time our next meeting, but, you know, I can certainly gather more information.
I would say, just given, I know his level of knowledge of pension debt and, you know, our unfunded obligation, I'd like to know why he voted against it. And maybe that, maybe that adds either some color or other language to it or other requests in the resolution, if we know the reason why, maybe it's fine, but there's some other things that really need to be in there, or maybe it's, you know, got some other issues.
Who's gonna call him?
I'll call him.
Okay.
Okay. So, can we move to postpone this to the next meeting? Sure. I'm gonna postpone to the next meeting. Okay, motion, second. Macy. Discussion? None. Call for vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Alright, so, take a look, next week after consulting with our former state representative who voted against it. Alright, this brings us to the last agenda item that Commissioner Macy added to the agenda tonight, so articulately...
I'm gonna articulate it again.
Okay, will you please articulate the motion, 'cause I did not write it down verbatim.
I'd like, I'd like to move to approve an interim terms sheet agreement while we continue to negotiate with MPS for an amendment to the parking services agreement.
Motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Douglas, discussion. Commissioner Kolo?
I guess I'll ask Mr. Leal, um, we've discussed this quite a bit during our closed session today, if there's other changes that we might have discussed, would that be a motion that would follow this tonight?
Yes, I, I think that right now you're approving the draft term sheet in concept, and, but there's still the issue of, and I'll just say bluntly, the grace period and the two to three hour, no, the grace period and...
Just the grace period.
Just the grace period, the, the actual time period.
So, so that would be, after we vote on this, we would then talk about grace period and time limits tonight?
Well, you would need, the two ways to do it, one, the more complicated way is to make the motion to approve this, and add, and additionally add the, the time period for the grace period and the, I'm sorry...
Extension of the max time.
Extension of the max time. Or vote on the agreement, and then come back with another motion that sets the actual time periods, the two, the two items. So, it's up to you.
Just so I'm clear, that would be the next motion in like five minutes from now, you would set that time limit motion, right?
Yes.
Okay. Whenever, just, we're not waiting two weeks.
No.
Commissioner Dubb?
Uh, yeah, because I'm not convinced or satisfied that the direction of these negotiations are, are likely to resolve our many concerns, I'll be voting no.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
Question is to when the term sheet will, when will the public start to know what's happening?
I would say, based on when we can do timely sort of implementation, the, the actual programming of the changes would be pretty quick, but it, it, there's a lot of signage that's out there, there's, there's also stickers that, that are on the banners that they have the time limit, so, we'd, we'd want to allow enough time so there's consistent messaging, that there isn't any confusion. One of the, the dates that I set out there, it's a little bit less than when I was quoted, it was two weeks, but I would like to shoot for the, the beginning of the, the restaurant week, which is coming up on April 20th. It's, it's a pretty tight timeframe, but would like to have it rolled out at the beginning of that time.
So, I'll be supporting the motion on the table, because I think we need to get immediate, it's gone on too long, we need to get this interim changes put into place while we rework some of the other elements on the term sheets, so that we start to see that relief immediately, so I'll be supporting it. And we'll learn from it. Commissioner Kolo?
I think Commissioner Dubb's very valid in voting no on this, I'm beyond the fence on that also, it's, uh, it's been a long process to get here, and I, I think there's been a lot of not good out of what we've experienced. But I'll probably end up voting for this, simply because it's the beginning of the end, and a path forward so that we can finally have the relief that the city's been looking for, that the residents have been looking for, that the businesses have been looking for.
Anybody else? Sorry, my screen popped up at me, something very unusual, just keeps taking me off guard. Alright, with no other discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nope.
Motion passes. Alright, Commissioner Kolo?
So, so that brings up a secondary motion here, right, of the term sheet that we just talked about, gives us the ability to change the parking hours, which I think is highly important. We now have control over this again, so we can move, we know from our Rich and Associates study, and just our data, that a lot of the tickets happen in the first 15 minutes that you're parked, that you're parked in a spot. For my other people, not knowing that there's a camera taking a picture of the license plate, they just pull up, text someone, take a phone call, running to get a coffee. So, we're not gonna change that behavior anytime soon. So, with the new ability to actually make a change to that, I, I'm beyond excited for that, that we can finally make a motion to move to 20-minute time limits, and three-hour limits on 20-minute grace periods and three-hour
Max time. The motion by Commissioner Kolo, is there a second?
Sorry, three-hour max time on the street is what he said.
On the street.
Motion by, is there a second? Well, you guys don't like grace periods and max time increases?
Where did 20 minutes come from?
He was looking at the hammer.
He said 20, he said 20.
I said 20.
Where did 20 minutes come from?
Brandon Kolo?
Uh, yeah, right.
And I support, by the way, for the, I mean, the motion's gonna die if nobody supports it, but...
I said 15-minute grace period and three-hour, the motion was 15 minutes.
Yes, you can.
15 minutes and three hours. No, no, don't let it die, it's 15, I, Robert's rules, someone get the book out, it's 15 minutes
Three.
and three hours.
Two. One.
I, I will, I will take us to Robert's rules. I can amend it, it's not the second, I can amend it.
Okay, Commissioner Kolo, would you like to make another motion?
Fine, 15-minute, I move for 15-minute grace periods and three-hour time limits.
Second.
For Los Angeles Park.
Second by Commissioner...
On the street.
We have, second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? Oh, Commissioner Hunt, sorry.
Rich and Associates, the professionals who did the study, took a look at what would be an appropriate grace period, suggested 15 minutes, I would be in line to agree with that and go with the 15 minutes. And I think all the chatter that we've heard were people asking for a 15-minute grace period, so I would support that 15-minute grace period.
Commissioner Dubb?
Just wanna make sure it's clear that we, the ability to do this is a result of the negotiation, not just 'cause we haven't done it.
Right.
This was not possible until right now.
15 minutes ago.
Yes. Anybody else? Yeah, no, I appreciate the negotiating team on this, working really hard, and putting a sense of urgency behind it. We're in a position now where we do have the ability, and I think we spent exactly 30 seconds from when the first motion was passed to when this one was put in, to actually make these changes, better backed in data like Commissioner Hunt said. So, I prefer a 20-minute, we'll see where the 15-minute goes, and, you know, I think the three-hour makes sense, and, you know, we'll, we'll take it from there, and communicate